You bring an energy I've never felt before. Some kind of chemical that reaches through my core. Feels like as far as you and me, I've never had a choice. You feel like home. You're like the opposite of all of my mistakes. Tear down the biggest walls and put me in my place. I know that kind of comfortable you cannot replicate. You feel like home. So if you're asking me, say, oh, how do you know? I don't just feel it in my heart. Don't just feel it in my heart. No, I feel it in my bones. I feel it in my bones. And I know when it cuts deep down through your chest and through your soul, that's how you know. That's how I know. I feel it in my bones. And I know when it cuts deep down through your chest and through your soul, that's how you know. That's how I know. I feel it in my bones. So many people just walking and out your life. I'd trade a couple hundred just to get some time back to strike. Cause for you and me, I got no alibi. You feel like home. Oh, so if you're asking me, saying, oh, how do you know? I don't just feel it in my heart. Don't just feel it in my heart. No, I feel it in my bones. I feel it in my bones. Yeah, and I know when it cuts deep down through your chest and through your soul, that's how you know. That's how I know. I feel it in my bones. So many people just walking and out your life. I'd trade a couple hundred just to get some time back to strike. Cause for you and me, I got no alibi. You feel like home. Oh, so if you're asking me, saying, oh, how do you know? I don't just feel it in my heart. Don't just feel it in my heart. No, I feel it in my bones. I feel it in my bones. Yeah, and I know when it cuts deep down through your chest and through your soul, that's how you know. That's how I know. I feel it in my bones. I feel it in my bones. And I feel it in my bones. Oh, that's how you know. That's how I know. So if you're asking me, say, boy, how do you know? I don't just feel it in my heart. Don't just feel it in my heart. No, I feel it in my bones. I feel it in my bones. Yeah, and I know when it cuts deep down through your chest and through your soul, that's how you know. That's how I know. I feel it in my bones. I feel it in my bones. And I feel it in my bones. Oh, that's how you know. That's how I know. I feel it in my bones. My pop was a rolling stone, and so am I. I can't control myself, and so can nobody else. My mind got a heavy heart, and so have I. I carry the weight alone, for reasons nobody knows. My pop was a rolling stone, and so am I. I can't control myself, and so can nobody else. My mind was a broken soul, and so am I. I try to put the pieces back together, and I know it will take me forever. I hear the call from the wild, what's going on tonight? I think that you and I got something in common. You're like a grand auto theft, dancing on the left. You baby, can't you see that I'm falling? Rolling stone, roll, rolling stone, roll, rolling stone, roll, rolling stone. What, are you an astronaut? Got the whole universe, so what you coming around here for? Say you need more air. Are you underwater now? We're not even in that deep. Acting like you're gonna drown. We were dancing late into the day, half asleep and half awake. When the music starts to fade. We were laying, laying in our bed. For one second you forget, oh, here we go again. You say you wanna break, so we break up. It's a mistake, so we make up. And then we make out, you freak out. Here we go again. Say we go too fast, when you're sober, then have a glass. You're coming over, and then we make out, you freak out. Don't be such a boy. Don't be such a boy. You say you need more of me. What am I, a toy again? You play me like you're all I got, but I ain't hanging by your threads. You say you need love, mm, yeah, we all do. And I want to, if you let me. We were dancing late into the day, half asleep and half awake. When the music starts to fade. We were laying, laying in our bed. For one second you forget, oh, here we go again. You say you wanna break, so we break up. It's a mistake, so we make up. And then we make out, you freak out. Here we go again. Say we go too fast, when you're sober, then have a glass. You're coming over, and then we make out, you freak out. Don't be such a boy. Don't be such a boy. Breathe in and breathe out, we're chilling, so chill out. You're falling, you fall out. Don't be such a boy. Breathe in and breathe out, we're chilling, so chill out. You're falling, you fall out. Don't be such a boy.
Hey, what's that thing that you do? No, you're not that thing that you're doing. All the things that you do are not who you are. Why don't you come over here? Why don't you come over here? Why don't you come over here? Why don't you come over? See, I have a friend, and wish them love. See, I'm an enemy, and wish them more. See, see the things that you're doing. See, see the things that you do. See the things that you do are not who you are. Why don't you come over here? Why don't you come over here? Why don't you come over here? Why don't you come over? See, I have a friend, and wish them love. See, I'm an enemy, and wish them more. See, I have every right and wish them all your love. Can feel the love inside. Feel the love in the sea. Feel the love in the sea. And let it go. Let the love go. Oh, let the love go. Oh, let the love go. Oh, let the love go. Feel the love go. Feel the love go. Feel the love that you owe. 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 There's so much more to explore. What makes the stars shine and the vines climb? I still feel kinda unsure. Got everything, got everything, creating joy for you. They got everything, too sad to say, they took everything from me. I still wanna know. I've been around the world, I've gone from bad to worse. I heard them tell me to let go. Still wanna know. I asked the eight ball in the Ouija, show me under the veil. Baby, I may have had a rehab, chasing after the wheel. I've been beaten down, I've been pushed around, I'm a stupid clown, oh, yeah. I've been filthy rich, up and down in a ditch, but I still come back for more. Cause I still wanna know. Wanna touch, wanna feel, wanna taste, wanna heal, wanna turn at the wheel. Yeah, I still wanna know. Wanna ride, wanna drive, wanna laugh, wanna cry, wanna dream day and night. Yeah, I still wanna know. I've been around the world, I've gone from bad to worse. I heard them tell me to let go. Still wanna know. Never cash in your chips till you're satisfied. Yeah, I still wanna know. I've been around the world, I've gone from bad to worse. Heard them tell me to let go. Still wanna know. I've been around the world, I've seen all kinds of hurt. I heard them tell me to let go. Still wanna know. Still wanna know. Still wanna know. Still wanna know. Yeah, I still wanna know. Still wanna know. Still wanna know. Still wanna know. Oh, you're just the same as I used to know. Always playing games in the strangest ways. You come and go, 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 just like before, for, oh, I should've known. Oh, you're just the same as I used to know. Always playing games in the strangest ways. You come and go, 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 just like before, for, oh, I should've known. I should've known. You reminded me of all, just walking down that road. It's in the blood and water. And it's just like a old friend, coming up, yeah, I know them. Dropped up in the driveway, locked up cause it's stolen. Not looking for problems, one look and I'm all in. It's late in the morning, five o'clock down, then I can keep calling. And it's just like a old friend, coming up, yeah, I know them. You're just the same as I used to know. Always playing games in the strangest ways. You come and go, 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 just like before, for, oh, I should've known. I should've known. You reminded me of all, just walking down that road. It's in the blood and water. And it's just like a old friend, coming up, yeah, I know them. Dropped up in the driveway, locked up cause it's stolen. Not looking for problems, one look and I'm all in. It's late in the morning, five o'clock down, then I can keep calling. I got a couple old friends, I swear I'm trying to make amends. Forget the years I haven't been, and we can ride around again like before. Making up our own laws. I got a couple old friends, yeah. And it's just like a old friend, coming up, yeah, I know them. Dropped up in the driveway, locked up cause it's stolen. Not looking for problems, one look and I'm all in. It's late in the morning, five o'clock down, then I can keep calling. And it's just like a old friend, coming up, yeah, I know them. Dropped up in the driveway, locked up cause it's stolen. Not looking for problems, one look and I'm all in. It's late in the morning, five o'clock down, then I can keep calling. I'm twisted, I'm trying to prove myself to you. Got me working through the weekend, I'm in the head, I'm in another. Days I'm going under. Somebody take me back so I can feel. Somebody take me back, oh, please, make it real. Somebody take me back so I can feel. Let's make it real. What are you wanting me to be? Don't feel a thing that you were throwing out on me. Now I'm out up in the deep end over again. Keep going on, today I'm going under. Somebody take me back so I can feel. Somebody take me back, oh, please, make it real. Somebody take me back so I can feel.
That I would need to know the height of the fence for the gate if this is going to be part of the motion on that north property. The material, the height, and as well as the hours. Staff would suggest that the note for the hours would be something along the lines as gates to be secured during non-operational business hours. And I just wanted to make that for the record. And I'll defer to Melanie Callaway for the language for the left turn on the Gray Street area.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Melanie Callaway, transportation planning. So you can have a note on the plan that says that the petitioner may apply for a right-of-way permit for any modification to the driveway along Gray Street. That should be adequate because they do have to go through a right-of-way use permit, and they have to be able to get approved using standards, and they have to meet all of that to be able to put any type of channelization.
Is there any need for Mr. Mechanic? Do you see any need to put any additional comments you have on the record?
Do we move to open or reopen?
David Mechanic for the record.
If you want, if you want, just let's just open it even though you have the motion. Let's assume that then the motion is still on, probably on the floor. Okay, Mr. Mechanic, do you want to make the motion?
So move.
Motion to reopen, Councilman Viera, second for Councilman Citro, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, go ahead, sir.
Yes, David Mechanic again for the record. I think that what Ryan and Melanie described are appropriate to be included, incorporated into the motion. I think what Mr. Viera said, though, is that the right-of-way application would be for purposes of an improvement which would deter left-hand turning movements out of the driveway, the existing driveway that exists today there.
Yes.
So I think you'd want to include that because that's the purpose of why you're adding that.
And also with regard to the height of the fence, did you hear Mr. Manassas?
I'd have to ask Randy Cohen. I think there's probably a standard driveway kind of gate that we would use. Mr. Cohen, are you there?
Yes, this is Randy Cohen. I would suggest a four-foot metal gate, the design that we could take care of, but it's simply to restrict vehicles from coming in and out of the parking lot when it is closed and locked. So four feet would be more than sufficient.
Yeah, it would not be like a fence. Usually they have bars, like it's like metal tubing, which prevents a car from going through, but it wouldn't necessarily prevent a pedestrian from walking through. Not like a solid fence.
Councilman Ding Felder.
As long as the hearing is open, let me ask a question. Ms. Callaway, can you hear me okay? Okay.
Yes.
So what you described is language that could go on the PD that would say that the petitioner could apply for it for the directional barriers there on their own property, but there's no guarantees that they can get that approval because we don't know what the conditions are there, right? As we sit here today, is that correct?
Correct. So they may apply to even channelize the driveway in the right-of-way. That's what they'd be applying for in the right-of-way, to channelize the driveway. And that's what they, but at this point, we don't have a design. We don't know what it looks like. So once you apply for that right-of-way permit, it has to meet all transportation technical standards and any other requirements. And it would have to meet that for it to be approved.
Right. So there's no guarantees there. And then in regard to, we were just talking about Gray. In regard to the folks who might want to go out north up the alley and leave on Carmen, I don't even believe anybody's talked about that in terms of trying to channelize that.
That was, if I may, Mr. Chair, please.
Yes.
I had specifically asked for the, both the north and south exits to have the so-called diversion pork chop.
Right.
So I did say the north and south.
No, I know you did, Joe, and that's why I brought it up because the motion as it stands right now only speaks to the gray part because that, the gray part is on private, potentially on private property. But the alley going up to Carmen is 100% public property. As a matter of fact, the petitioner said they don't even own either side of that alley up on the Carmen side. That's my, that's my point, Joe, is the motion doesn't include that.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
The alley is very narrow. They're only 10 feet wide. So the driveway is very narrow. I don't believe we could channelize the alley on Carmen in any way. But Gray Street would have an opportunity, maybe if it meets standards, to have some type of channelization going through a right-of-way permit.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you very much, Councilman Viera.
Yeah, no, if I may, I can certainly amend it for north and south as requested by, as referenced by Councilman Ding Felder and requested by Councilman Citro.
But staff has already told us there's no opportunity for the petitioner. It's not a petitioner issue on the north side, on the Carmen side. That's totally a city issue. I mean, Kate, you want to confirm that?
Yeah, Ms. Callaway confirmed that it's public right-of-way. It's off-site. So that, it's one thing to look at the directional driveway that's on the property going into the right-of-way on Gray Street. But Carmen, that is accessed through an alley. It's public access. So that would be, I believe, beyond the scope of this petition for that reason. It's not, it's property not controlled by the applicant.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know we're trying to mitigate things, but what I'm hearing, I don't see a lot of mitigation. What I'm hearing staff, and I hate to build people up to burst their bubble, I just don't see where this is going. I know we're trying to look at some different avenues here, but I just don't see the avenues. And I think we need to move, we need to move with a motion so we can move on.
Mr. Mechanic?
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Mechanic, as a result of what you heard Ms. Callaway say or the exchange in the question?
David Mechanic for the record. I mean, we have offered to do whatever anybody has asked us to do. So it's pretty frustrating for us to be looking at the possibility of a denial when we've essentially said, we'll do whatever you want us to do. Controlling that alley is the city's purview. So the city could make a determination to do something with that alley. But we can't control that. We can't do that. Kate has said we can't put a condition to do that, or otherwise we'd agree to do that too. I mean, I would like to just point out, we're not expanding the medical practice. So there is no increased traffic. All we are talking about is accommodating cars that are currently wandering around the neighborhood looking for a parking space. So when you get, look at it from a totally logical standpoint, you don't really need these safeguards. I mean, I hate to say it, we're agreeing to whatever you all want, but at the end of the day, there's no more traffic that will be there. It's just we are corralling it in the new expanded parking lot. Today, those cars are going wherever the heck they can find a space. I mean, this should be considered a positive thing, not a negative thing. But I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Motion to close?
We have motion close for Councilman Viera, second for Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, Councilman Viera, you had the motion on the floor?
Yep.
Do we have a second to Councilmember Viera's motion?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Citro.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for the purposes of the record, if you can, Councilman Viera, just with regard to making any findings with regard to consistency.
Thank you very much.
In support of your motion.
Yep, compliance with applicable goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan, compliance with land development codes such as proposed use promotes the efficient and sustainable use of land and infrastructure.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, a second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
No.
Ding Felder?
No.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion not carried with Councilmember Ding Felder, Councilmember Carlson, Councilmember Citro?
No. Miranda, Carlson, Goode, Ding Felder, voting no.
With Councilmember Miranda, Carlson, Citro, and Ding Felder voting no.
No, I voted yes.
Check, can we take a vote again, please?
Viera, yes. Maniscalco, yes. Citro, yes. Everybody else, no.
Motion failed with Viera voting yes, Citro voting yes, and the remaining councilmembers voting no.
No, I voted yes as well.
Can we just, will we be able to take the vote again?
Go ahead.
Please, thank you. Viera?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, yes.
Goode?
No.
Ding Felder?
No.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion failed with Councilmember Ding Felder, Councilmember Goode, and Councilmember Miranda, and Councilmember Carlson voting no.
Who would like to take, who would like to take another stab at this in an apparent denial?
I'll do, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Ding Felder.
Thank you. First, let me lead off by saying that the petitioner's representative, Mr. Mechanic, and Mr. Cohen, as always, did an excellent job. There's no reflection on them. But I do believe, for a variety of reasons, I think as Councilman Goode sort of alluded to, that we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole. The petitioner is asking for 29 more spaces than even the code requires. And I'm going to move to deny this petition, REZ 20-63, property located at 501 North Howard Avenue at 2113 West Gray and 2114 and 2118 West Carmen Street. Due to the failure of the applicant to meet its burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence that the development as conditioned and shown on the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the city code, and the applicant's failure to meet its burden of proof with respect to the requested waivers. Specifically, I would say that the testimony that we heard from the neighborhood, including one transportation expert who happens to be in the neighborhood, as well as other competent testimony that we heard, would indicate that the petitioner has failed to comply with the goals, objectives, and policy of the comprehensive plan, specifically Policy Land Use Subjective 9.3 and Policy 9.3.1, which relates to the protection of state neighborhoods. The current existing zoning classification of RS 50 for the lots proposed. There's been inadequate testimony and evidence to justify changing those land use categories from RS 50 to something else. Also believe they failed to comply with the Land Development Code 27-136. The purpose of the Site Plan Control District includes that the proposed development, as shown on the site plan, does not promote or encourage development that's appropriate in the location, character, and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And that's what the evidence, I believe I heard, supports. Moreover, that the proposed use does not promote the efficient and sustainable use of land and infrastructure. And then finally, that the waivers requested under 27-139, Part 4, that they failed to comply with the requirements of that subsection, specifically that the waivers will substantially interfere with and injure the rights of others, specifically the residential uses adjacent and contiguous or contiguous to the proposed parking lot. The need for, the need or desire for the waivers necessarily, doesn't necessarily support the fact that the proposed development does not comply with the Land Development Code. Excuse me. The need or desire for waivers necessarily supports the fact that the proposed development does not comply with the Land Development Code. For those lengthy reasons, I will move to deny.
Very, very good. Do we have a second for?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Goode, roll call vote.
Viera?
No.
Goode?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Citro?
No.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
No.
Motion carried with Councilmember Viera, Councilmember Citro, and Councilmember Maniscalco voting no.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before you?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Martin Shelby, for the record again, just to complete this, to remind all parties and to remind the public generally. And I'm referring to the instructions to participate in a virtual public hearing which are available on the city council's webpage at tampa.gov.net. Excuse me, Tampa.gov, that's the new improved website, Tampa.gov. And on the city council's webpage is forward slash city council, one word, that all applicant, all evidence, excuse me, and I'm reading from this. All evidence submitted for viewing at the hearing must include the file number for the hearing for which the evidence is to be considered. Applicants and all other participants who elect to submit evidence by sharing their screen at the time of the hearing must submit a complete electronic copy of all documents presented during the public hearing to council quasi-submissions@tampa.gov.net within 24 hours of conclusion of the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the next item. Item number two, or 72, cannot be heard until we hear item number 76. Are you, are you here in the audience for 72 or six? You are? Okay. We're going to move to 73, 4, 5, then get to the 6 and 72. Do we have anybody registered online for the rest of the second readings, Madam Clerk?
No, Chair, there was only one registered speaker. That was for item number 71.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number 73 is a second reading. Mr. Manassas?
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassas, Development Coordination. Item number 73 is file number REZ 20-85. It's ordinance before you for second reading and adoption. The property located at 2302 West Virginia Avenue, and they're requesting a rezon from RS 50 to PD Plan Development for residential, single-family detached. Certified site plans have been turned into the city clerk. The corrections being made between the first and second reading, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions at this time? No, hearing none? All right, do we have an applicant here for item number 73? Yes? Please state your name for the record. And were you sworn in?
No.
If you are to speak and you're here, please raise your right hand on any of these items, and we'll swear you in. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Vivian Hernandez, 17117 Lakeshore Road. I'm here to represent the owner of the property at 2302 West Virginia. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 73?
We'll close.
Second.
Nobody was registered, nobody at the kiosk. We have motion close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Any opposed? Councilman Ding Felder, did I leave off with you or?
I think I just did the last one.
Councilman Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. You voted no on this, Councilman Goode.
Yep, that's right.
Skip over to Councilman Viera, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, 73. I move an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2302 West Virginia Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RS 50 residential, single-family to PD Plan Development residential, single-family detached, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Viera with a second from Councilmember Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Goode and Councilmember Miranda voting no.
Thank you very much. Next up, item number 74, Mr. Manassas.
Thank you, sir. Ryan Manassas, Development Coordination. Item number 74 is file number REZ 20-89. It's an ordinance before you for second reading and adoption for the property located at 3205 West Arch Street. The request before you was going from zoning classification RS 50 to PD Plan Development for residential, single-family detached. Certified site plans have been turned into the city clerk, and staff is available for any questions.
Any questions at this time? All right. Petitioner for item number 74? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Council. Fred Henry Domain Homes, 5703 South McDo Avenue, and I've been sworn. And I'm here for any questions you might have.
Any questions for the gentlemen? All right, anybody in the public wishes to speak on item number 74, REZ 20-89?
Close.
We have motion close from Councilman Ding Felder, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Councilmember Citro, would you mind reading item number 74?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. File number REZ 20-89, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance rezoning the property in the general vicinity of 3205 West Arch Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RS 50 residential, single-family to PD Plan Development residential, single-family detached, providing an effective date.
We have motion from Councilman Citro, do we have a second? Viera, second. Second from Councilmember Viera, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
No.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Goode and Councilmember Miranda voting no.
Great, next up is item number?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, 73, Madam Clerk, you got me as a yes, did you?
For 73, I have you as a yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't remember hearing my name, but maybe I was, whatever, okay.
Next up is item number 75, Mr. Manassas.
Thank you, sir. Item number 75, file number REZ 20-90. It's an ordinance before you for second reading and adoption for the property located at 3718 North 31st Street. Requesting zoning classification from RS 50 to PD Plan Development for residential, single-family detached. Again, certified site plans have been sent to the city clerk's office, and staff is available for any questions.
Any questions or comments? All right, petitioner, item number 75?
Thank you, Council. Fred Henry Domain Homes, Inc., 5703 South McDo Avenue, Tampa, Florida. And I'm here for any questions you may have. And once again, I've been sworn.
Any questions or comments? Anybody in the public wishes to speak on item number 75, REZ 20-90?
Move close.
Motion close from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty, next up, Councilmember Carlson, would you mind reading item number 75?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to move file number REZ 20-90, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3718 North 31st Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RS 50 residential, single-family to PD Plan Development residential, single-family detached, providing effective date.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
All right, we now go to item number 76, which needs to be heard before 72. Item number 76, Mr. Manassi.
That should be Barbara Lynch.
Hello?
Oh.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination, I'm here on VAC 2006. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Barbara Lynch? Nope. Petitioner, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. David Mechanic, 305 South Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant. Item 76 is the vacation of, of an alley and a road adjacent to the property, and item 72 is a rezoning application, and I am here on both applications.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Mechanic? Hearing none. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 76? Hearing none, can I get a motion to close?
Move close.
All right, we have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from?
Second.
Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, Councilmember Ding Felder, would you mind reading item number 76?
76, 76 trombones.
Okay.
File number VAC 20-06, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning two rights of way located within block of south, 26th Avenue, north of Plymouth Street, east of Talia Faro Avenue, and west of Nebraska Avenue, within the plat of Bonny Ventura subdivision, a subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, more, as more fully described in section one here, subject to certain easements, reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, as more particularly set forth here, and provide an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode's, roll call vote.
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, item number 72, REZ 20-82?
I'm Manassi Development Coordination, item number 72 is file REZ 20-82, an ordinance before you for second reading and adoption, property located 801 East 26th Avenue. The request was RS 50 zoning to PD Plan Development for residential multifamily, staff is available for questions, and certified site plans have been turned into the city clerk.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Mechanic?
Dave Mechanic, just here to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number 72?
Move close.
Motion close from Councilman Goode, second from?
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, Councilmember Goode's, if you could read item number 72.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, file number REZ 20-82, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 801 East 26th Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS 50 residential, single-family to PD Plan Development residential, multifamily, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, that settles that, we go to staff reports and unfinished business. Yes, sir? Nothing?
Well, I was just going to remind Council that I believe 77, 78, 79 don't have any questions, and are have, no staff for presentation. It's just a reminder, number 80 is also linked to item 79, it's a budget resolution, so that I would suspect would be also to be able to be moved unless Council had any questions.
All right, item number 77, $5 million. Who would like to move this resolution if there are no questions?
Viera moves.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, we have a second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote, or just?
Roll call.
Roll call vote on this.
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, item number 78, $3.1 million. Do we have any questions, comments?
Viera moves.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, second from?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes, and this, this is the one that's a hundred percent minority contractor.
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next up, item number 79, $3.8 million. Do we have a motion?
Move the resolution.
Motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next up is item number 80, $677,000. Do we have any questions? If not, a motion to move the resolution?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, I believe, with a second from Viera? Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, item number 81 is a report on fencing, specifically corner and front yard fencing. And we have a memo from Abby Feely, is Abby Feely on the line, or?
I don't have any questions beyond the memo.
No, all right.
I don't know if anybody else does.
Any questions for Ms. Feely?
I'm receiving, receiving, file that.
Move to receive and file then?
So move.
Motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Ding Felder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, next up, we have the Tampa Police Department to provide a report on the fencing guidelines, also a memo from Abby Feely. Are there any questions for Ms. Feely, or for TPD? I see Mike Schmidt on the line with a member from TPD. Any questions?
None.
Hearing none, can I get a motion to receive and file?
Well, Mike Schmidt has a TPD there with him?
Yes.
So, I, I, the, the reason this came up, and I, and I can't remember exactly what, if the memo quotes TPD, but the question was, is it important, from a safety perspective, for us to try and keep front yards visible, you know, for, for TPD's purposes? In other words, is it, is it a bad idea to, to allow solid fencing, especially, you know, four foot or six foot fencing in the front yard, from a TPD perspective?
Based on the, I'll let you, so based on, on TPD's perspective, it, it is a safety issue, we would love to be able to see into the front yard, or that restrictive, especially the higher the fence, the restrictive, gives, gives that opportunity for individuals or subjects to, to hide, and, and when we are in one of those situations where we're looking for someone that does restrict our ability to, to locate an individual, yes.
And is that part of those SEPTED standards as well?
It is.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And sir, if you could state your name for the record?
My apologies, Captain Les Richardson, Tampa Police Department.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Um, no, it's not related to this, just Captain, I, I, I know that all, all of city council wishes our friend Chief Dugan a, a speedy recovery from COVID, so just send him our best, God bless him.
Second that. Okey dokey. Can we get a motion to receive and file, item 82?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, next up, dirt bikes and off-road vehicles, which have created a nuisance in parts of the city.
Telling me.
Mm-hmm. I've seen the videos, and, what is it, on Broad Street, generally?
Everywhere, man.
Everywhere.
All right, yeah, I saw someone put a Facebook post, I don't know if it was dirt bikes, but on Waters and Dale Mabry, I know it's outside of the city limits, but a kid got killed, and his friends just kept riding, riding off.
All thirty of them.
All right, TPD and legal, if you want to speak about this plan to combat the unauthorized dirt bikes and off-road vehicles?
Good afternoon again, Council, I'm Captain Les Richardson, Tampa Police Department, here with Mike Schmidt, and we are here to address that ATV and dirt bike situation in reference to what we do. If I could get you to share my screen.
Not yet. Yes, now we can see it.
All right, so, just a little, pass through that, if you would, Mike, a little history on that, just an overview from the Tampa Police Department's perspective, let's go to slide three. So, in the year 2020, Tampa Police Department received 886 calls referencing dirt bike or ATVs. Now, just to kind of bring that into perspective, that does include several of our, um, repeat calls, duplicate calls, and of those 886, we probably, in, in, generally come in contact with somewhere between 20 and 25% upon officer arrival that they will see or, or get in contact with the subject on the vehicle. Um, it's very difficult for us to get there, a lot of those calls are delayed, but it, it, it does give us the opportunity, and we've affected 46 arrests on those cases. We have identified there were four fatalities in 2020 involving the dirt bikes or the ATVs on city public roads. Um, next slide, please. Quick case example of what we're dealing with, in December 22nd, we had an ATV flee from a traffic stop. That traffic stop, that subject fled into the area of Belmont Heights. Luckily, we had some of our resources out there, and our air service was able to pick up that vehicle as it fled from the traffic stop. The officers were able to come in contact with the individual that was driving the ATV, he was in possession of a firearm that he had discarded during a short foot pursuit, had several felony, outstanding felony warrants, and narcotics at that time. Uh, we, we're using all the resources we have, and I think our, I think we'll always get back to the fact that our, our most essential resource is the community, and having the community help us with a lot of those things. But outside of that, we wanted to look at some other things, and if I could get to the next slide real quickly, I'm gonna let, uh, Mike Schmidt get into some of the things that we have discovered, and some of the laws that we're gonna look and use to, to help us fight this battle.
Good afternoon, Mike Schmidt, Assistant City Attorney. Based on officer questions, and as well as motion by city council, I have researched some legal options concerning possible enforcement and impoundment of ATVs and dirt bikes. When I started researching this area of law, I came across chapter 317, it's titled Florida Off-Highway Vehicle Titling Act, and, um, the off-highway vehicles are defined as ATVs, dirt bike, basically dirt bikes, recreational off-road vehicles, and, so that would encompass the vehicles we're talking about that are riding on the public streets of the city of Tampa. So, once I started to read through chapter 317 several times, trying to understand it and see what possible penalties were in there, and what it applied to, I determined that chapter 317 requires off-highway vehicles, which I'll refer to as OHVs, to be titled when purchased by a resident of Florida after July 1st, 2002. It makes it unlawful to operate or use an OHV when a certificate of title is required without the certificate having been obtained. It makes it unlawful to remove, alter, deface, or cover a motor or vehicle identification number, and also it makes it unlawful to transfer an OHV without providing title. There are many other laws within this chapter 317, some are felonies, some are misdemeanors, and ones that are neither become infractions. I issued a legal bulletin, 2021-01, on Monday of this week, to help provide guidance to law enforcement, so that they would understand chapter 317 and their enforcement actions. One of the possible enforcement actions concerning off-highway vehicles is when an officer discovers, for example, a off-highway vehicle that's being operated or used without its certificate of title, as being required, having been obtained, the officer is gonna determine that that is a second degree misdemeanor. So therefore, an OHV which is not properly titled when it was required to be titled, is gonna be subject to an impoundment. In addition, we're finding that a lot of these off-highway vehicles may not have their VIN numbers. Somebody may have obtained this OHV by theft, or maybe they, you know, bought it from somebody else who stole it, or whatever the scenario, but a lot of times, these OHVs don't have VIN numbers. If the OHV doesn't have a VIN number, that is also a crime, and it's gonna lead to the impoundment of the OHV. In addition, an operator who winds up getting arrested on a public right of way for policy, that vehicle, that OHV is going to be impounded. And then finally, OHVs which are used in the commission of a felony are also going to be impounded. So, we believe that providing officers with this additional legal requirements for OHV titling is going to help enforcement and discourage OHVs on public roads, and with proper impoundment of the OHV will occur. And I'll turn it now back over to Captain Les Richardson.
So, just one last thing as our enforcement challenge is, clearly the department and several agencies nationwide will not pursue the dirt bike or the ATV, it's clearly a public safety hazard, and it's not something we want to do. However, we have been using several of our resources, and again, with addition to this 317, chapter 317, we think that's yet another tool. However, again, we can't stress enough the, the importance of the community helping us with us, and using the tip 411 line, the non-emergency and online recording, there's a lot more, we're looking for information in reference to where the bikes are being held, or where they're being stored, with the community's help, and we, we can push out a lot of that information to, to help educate the community. I mean, it's not that the Tampa Police Department is against the use of the ATVs and the dirt bikes, but we do think that they need to be done safely and on the public roads, that is, that clearly causes a public safety issue. And with that, that is where we are looking at right now, using this chapter 317 as an additional tool to help remove some of these vehicles off of the streets, along with educating the public and getting their assistance to help us with it.
All right, Councilmember Goode's?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your leadership this afternoon. Captain Richardson, my friend, and Mr. Schmidt, you know this is a grave issue of concern in community, in the, in the city. My office has received several calls, so I'm glad we were able to find some things. I'm hoping that we can craft some type of ordinance for the city, I know we have some state mandates here, but hoping we can craft some type of ordinance, and also have a real vigorous campaign educating the public on their rights to own a ATV or off-road vehicle, and what are some of the consequences if you're not following the rules and regulations. And I think it needs to be a robust campaign to get the community, get it out there, educate it to the media, press conferences, what do we need, maybe go into the law enforcement trust fund, maybe take some funds out of there, or maybe get in with FDOT to see if to see if some kind of grant funding to be able to help get this campaign going. I've seen myself, I witnessed several accidents. I didn't see the, the number of accidents on your, um, on your presentations, because I noticed there are a bunch of accidents. I saw the fatalities and I witnessed a couple of them, but, uh, I'm hoping that we can craft some type of ordinance for the city along what you've already, uh, presented and also see if we can get some dollars behind it to have a robust campaign to educate the public on the do's and don'ts and again, make the enforcement when we need to make the enforcement.
All right, anybody else? Hearing none. Thank you very.
Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Smith, could you respond on that and, and so I can understand where we can, we can be headed on this issue here? You and the captain, please.
Uh, I'm sorry, respond as to which part of that specifically, sorry.
Can, can we be able to craft something and also educate the public? Looking into the law enforcement trust, asking FDOT, they have any funding to be able to educate the public on this issue and also crafting some type of ordinance for the city.
I could address the ordinance and then I'll let the, uh, captain address the, uh, other portion of your, um, your question. As far as the, uh, drafting an ordinance, I did look into that. Uh, but when I discovered chapter three seventeen and the fact that we already could impound these vehicles, there was already most likely going to be an arrest as a second-degree misdemeanor uh, for, uh, these vehicles being untitled, which is what we suspect and possibly even a felony if it's, uh, not VIN. Um, you know, we are already have tools that we weren't using, um, in place. We want to try those tools first under chapter three seventeen. If we don't have, if we find these tools aren't sufficient, then we could consider crafting an ordinance, possibly under our fourteen thirty, uh, for a impoundment or something like that of these vehicles, uh, if they're operated on the roads, but it has to be for at least some sort of criminal offense, which we believe already is gonna be allowing us to impound these vehicles. So, right now, our recommendation would be to hold off on an ordinance and wait and see if these current new, these new uh, ideas are going to work to discourage, uh, this type of activity. If it doesn't work, we would like to then come back with the draft ordinance.
What timeframe we looking at? Maybe sixty, ninety days for an update possibly?
I'm sorry, what, sir?
Possibly sixty to ninety days for an update to see how that's working?
Sure, yes, sir.
But I think why, why, if we're going to start, uh, enforcing, we need to educate and I'm hoping that Mr. Captain Richardson can, can address that, be, if we need funding or what we need to do to educate the public. So if we're going out starting to impound, make arrests, the public needs to know why. Uh, so I, we don't have a big melee of we're picking on certain communities or certain people, uh, that needs to be addressed. But I know that we have to address it because the community, uh, and the drivers on our, uh, streets are complaining about it vigorously to all the council members, especially all over my district. So I'm hoping Mr. Richardson, Captain Richardson can, can address that and we can have some type of robust campaign to educate the public, uh, be it TV, radio, what have you. So if he could address that, sir.
Yeah, so, um, actually, I think that's a good idea. It's something that we will have to look into as far as the, the, the funding, uh, whether it can come from the law enforcement trust fund or if it's something else we need to do. But we have had several conversations with the media through the PIO's office in, in getting some of that information out there. We've also been using our neighborhood liaisons to get some of those informations out there. Talking to some of the Neighborhood Watch communities and asking them to, 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 to spread the word on how and educating as much as we possibly can. So absolutely, I think that is a, 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 something we will clearly be able to look into um, and see where that goes as far as the funding is concerned to get that done. And, and like you said, a robust campaign is something that probably needs to be occurred.
And, and the reason I say that because we impound someone's bike, well, I bought it for so-and-so person. Well, the rule is, so people can understand, if the vehicle of the ATV has no VIN number on it, we have no way of knowing if stolen or whatever, or you need to give up information and say who you bought that bike from. So I think we need to, that's why I said we make sure we need to educate the public. So they understand and people know, so there's no gray area there. This is the area, these are the rules and the laws if you're gonna own these ATVs. So I'm hoping that we can carry it out and get, get, get a report back to this council, uh, as soon as we can on how we're gonna make that campaign work. Like all council members really want to be interested in that. So my thing is I'm hoping with the next thirty days, we can have, uh, uh, something going on. You can report back to this council on what kind of campaign we're gonna have, if not sooner versus later.
Uh, understood and, and just to reiterate, you know, at, from a personal standpoint, you've been out there with us and you've seen this in the past. You know, we, we take the opportunities when we have to explain it, um, and, and let people know why we're doing things and, and how these things work. So absolutely, the officers are out there doing everything they can to make that, to get that education out there. And we just need to amp that, amp that up and find another way to do that. Uh, and, and I can understand and respect that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you so much. Next up, the firefighters.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very, very much. Uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, if, if, if Captain Richardson, Mr. Smith, if you can send the council members that presentation, I, I didn't see it. I looked inside and I didn't see the presentation. So if you can send that to me, so when I'm talking to constituents out there, I can kind of let them know where, where we're looking at and the statute and so forth.
We did, there was a transmitted, uh, PowerPoint that I had approved, unauthorized dirt bikes and off-road vehicles. So we'll make sure that it, uh, it gets out.
Maybe we might, my office might have missed it. We'll, we'll check and see, but thank you, sir.
Sounds good. Councilman Seater. Yes, sir.
Ready?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the reason why I asked for this report is back in October, let me get my stats here. October of twenty twenty, there was an internal audit by the city done on Tampa Fire Rescue. That stated a few things. Um, Tampa Fire Rescue is not meeting its established response standards. That was one. Uh, Tampa Fire Rescue personnel were not complying with vehicle inspection reports and monitoring. And then there was another one. Management should develop the standard reporting process by creating a monthly, uh, metrics to determine if the internal goals are being met. I'm, I'm taking this opportunity and I asked for, uh, the then-chief, LaCicero, now we have Tripp here, um, and the unions and fleet management to come down and respond to this audit. I think that would only be fair, uh, to hear from Tampa Fire Rescue. But I'm hoping, it is my hope, that during this rebuttal, we're gonna actually hear more and more of what not only seven fifty-four, Union seven fifty-four was asking for, more stations, more fire trucks, more, uh, emergency response and more personnel. So Chief Tripp, if you would like to start us off.
Barbara Tripp, interim, uh, Fire Chief at Tampa Fire Rescue. Good afternoon, um, council. Yes, so you gave me a task to do from the last, um, meeting and to, um, um, to respond to the audit. Basically, TFR is not meeting established response time. If you can put my PowerPoint up, um, I have some information concerning, um, responding to.
Okay, it's up.
Okay. So pretty much, um, during the audit, um, it was two areas that we need to respond to. The first area was we're not meeting our response, our, uh, standard response time of eight minutes and thirty seconds, ninety percent of the time. Some of the issues that we have had, basically, we've had the CAD that's pretty much been outdated since two thousand, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-eight. We currently have an ABL system that is currently out of service, been out of service for five years. Next slide. As I respond to item number one, our ABL system, as I spoke about, uh, pretty much has been out of service for five years. Our CAD system is outdated, which we have one that's, um, being implemented at the moment. And TNI can give an update on the status of that, as when it should be implemented. Radio traffic. Units are having to use their radio to try to get, um, information to our dispatch system to let them know that they're on scene or responding. So pretty much it's kind of like they're competing for radio, um, coverage. Another issue is some of the units might be responding to other calls that's out of the area. So the only way that we're gonna correct this action is basically we need to get a new CAD system. Our CAD system has been in, um, in works. It should be implemented by October twenty twenty-one per TNI. The new ABL system will, uh, correct some of this passive radio traffic. New ABL will also provide some real data time to correct our response time. And that should be a reason to allow us to do a analysis to show that our response time are meeting the standard times that we need. We also need to get more units on the streets. This will help decrease the response time throughout the city of Tampa. Additional stations, of course, will house these units. Would you like for TNI to respond as far as implementation on the, uh, new CAD system?
I, I would, uh.
Yes.
I, I, I have a question with that because I'm kind of confused. If, if the police department has had this system in place for I don't know how many years, where you can press a computer button, say you're ten ninety-seven, which means you're on scene, or ten-eight, when you, you're back in service. Well, I don't understand how FIRE has not had a computer when DPD has had this for I don't know how long. That doesn't make any sense to me. But if they could explain to me the new system that you're talking about or if it's a different CAD system, I'd like to know, because this doesn't make any sense.
So the CAD system, actually, we can go, we can give information, but we have to get radio traffic. Currently, we only have, we have multiple channels, but those channels are used whenever it's a different scenes and have multiple units. But the initial channel is our operation channel and pretty much the unit's gone scene from that operation, that one channel that we have. If you have multiple units throughout the city of Tampa, if you have twenty-three stations, you have forty-six apparatus, you know, responding to call, everyone is trying to go on that channel to say that they are either responding en route, transporting to the hospital because the ABL system is not working.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, gentlemen, you may not understand the police business, usually on a radio system there, different sectors have a different channel. So what I'm hearing the chief saying, they have one channel and everyone using that traffic on that one channel?
Well, we have multiple channels whenever they are given different frequencies for different scenarios. But we have one operation channel.
Hmm.
If I'm explaining that right.
I, I get it. That's, that's why I'm seeing why you're having difficulty, because I, I see what you're saying now.
But if we had the ABL system in place, there's no need to compete for radio traffic.
I get it.
And so the ABL has been out of service for quite a few years.
Which makes no sense. All right, thank you, chief. I understand.
Chief, I, I don't mean to jump in, but the majority of the people in the public, the citizens of Tampa, don't really know what the acronyms are. If you could, if you could be more precise or, or just so that, uh, the citizens know what we're talking about.
My apologies. ABL is the Automatic Vehicle Locator and the CAD is the Computer-Aid Dispatch System.
Thank you.
You have questions for TNI? I'll step to the side.
Anybody?
Well, they can, if you, chief, you're saying by October twenty twenty-one, they'll have this system.
Currently, if we don't have any major issues, any more COVID issues.
Well, if TNI on the line, they can explain the system so we can know what we're talking here?
Sure.
I mean, communication is, is all get out when you're dealing with getting to people, getting to services, getting to fires. It's very important.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Russell Halbert. I'm the CTO for the city of Tampa. I just want to let you guys, uh, know, again, we, we do take the condition of, of the firefighters and police equipment seriously. Um, we've been in process to replace this system with the new administration. We are on target for October date. Um, earlier, or I would say late last quarter, um, uh, we had a situation where our chief of staff encouraged us to find a way to get some, at, at least routing and notification, um, devices out to the folks. So we had purchased sixty, uh, iPads, had them delivered, uh, put maps on them, did the interim stuff that we needed to do in order to give them a way to get routed to a scene as a temporary gesture. While we were doing that, we went back to our CAD vendor, who, our computer-aided dispatch vendor, who had already, uh, uh, committed to an, uh, deployment with us and said, could you move up this location capability? It was scheduled for later. They have agreed to that and we are on a timeline to do that, uh, for the ABL portion, uh, by, I think, the first to second week of February. So, uh, we're in a situation here while, while the, the age of the infrastructure is regrettable. As soon as we could get funding and replace it, the administration was doing that and we are in process to do that. We've purchased probably, uh, uh, one of the best systems. It was done through a competitive procurement. We have a, uh, full computer-aided dispatch, records management, integrated CAD and business intelligence system, all designed to bring that system together. As the chief said, most police departments and fire departments are used to hitting the button and saying, I'm on scene, I'm not on scene, and having it automatically happen. Because this older equipment, we had GPS equipment that actually depended on our own antennas going back ten years ago and five years ago. So replacing that equipment is part of a half a million dollar initiative in this first year. The total project is one point two million dollars for all of the operational and capital costs over the next five years. And we're plowing that into the system to give them the best system they can to get the data they need so that they can operate the department the most effective way they can and have the management information they need to make the decisions that are critical for a city that's growing at the rate that it is now. So although we all regret that the equipment funding didn't come when we wanted it to, it is in process and it is on the way and we were doing everything we can to accelerate that process so that we don't have any problems out in the field from this point forward. If there's any technical questions, if any of the council would like to discuss the system as a whole with me after, I know some of you are more acquainted with this technology than others, I would be happy to work with you after hours uh, or at another time to let you know exactly what we have, share the timelines with you and make sure we keep you updated as to the progress of the new system.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
How did, how did this slip through the cracks? You, you're saying financial, but how, how did it slip through the cracks where, where our first responders, our fire first responders could be using antiquated equipment or equipment that's not useful anymore? How did that slip, slip through the cracks?
With all due respect, sir, I, I cannot tell you why administrations in the past made decisions. What I can tell you is, as soon as it was funded, the department, both the fire department and TNI were moving forward to make those replacements.
Was that funding, could that have been available through grants?
I, I do not know, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I see Mr. Greco standing. Do you want to say something? I see the fire union president here. And we'll get back to the chief.
Good afternoon, council. Joe Greco, President of Tampa Firefighters Local Seven Five Four. So for the last five years, we've been talking about this in labor management. We've discussed it ad nauseam, uh, to everybody who would listen. So we fight for radio, for a guy who fights for radio traffic every single day, trying to go on scene, available or anything else, whether that's a down fire. The radio traffic is so, uh, full, you can't literally, the reason Captain Tripp gave you, uh, the information she gave you is because we can't accurately tell you how long the response times are. Because you can't get on the radio, you might be waiting a minute or two, sitting in the unit while you have a, you know, if you did sit in the unit for a minute or two, you got a patient outside you're supposed to be tending to. You've got something to do. You can't sit there and wait to get on the radio and, and wait to, uh, to, to go on scene or whatever else you need. Literally, if you, if, potentially, you could have a down firefighter, you can't even get on the radio to, to, uh, to discuss because there's just so much traffic. So, uh, up to about five years ago, we had a computer in our trucks we could use to go on scene. We didn't have to have that radio traffic. You could allocate those, you know, that channel to just dispatch. But now it's everything. That channel, that one channel we have is allocated for all dispatches, all on scenes, all, everything, whether you're calling for BLS or ALS or another unit or whatever it is, channel one is dedicated to that. And it's absolutely packed. You can't get any more traffic on it than you currently got on it. So Chief Tripp's ab- absolutely correct. The times that we have, uh, may, they're probably not, are not as bad as what that audit said, but there's no way to accurately give you that information because our system is so antiquated that it's, uh, it's just inaccurate, period. It's inaccurate. So we've been hearing for five years that this CAD system, uh, Chief Jenkins, uh, former chief LaCicero, uh, former chief Bogish, I've heard it from, from everybody, how it's gonna be up and running. We've tested it multiple times when it's, and it's failed. I don't know what system they're building, but in five years of not having any type of computer-aided dispatch other than your initial tear-off from the station is absolutely ridiculous in a city the size of Tampa. Not only that, the, the iPads, which is a wonderful idea, we were all using our cellphones prior to that, personal cellphones to get to these calls. Um, they don't have any information on them like hydrant locations. Um, we were, we were able to.
I'm sorry, sir, I, I don't mean, but that is incorrect. We loaded I, the hydrant locations on each system.
If you are, if you are currently, if you use the iPad, the iPads were purchased so that we could potentially put another system on there so that we actually could get dispatch information responding, on scene and available. But through whatever, um, processes we've went through with IT, um, and the, and the one system that we tried, whether, it doesn't matter which one you put on it as a Band-Aid until this CAD that's supposed to have been come up for, at least four years ago from what we initially started talking about. Um, we, if, if you're using the iPad like you were your iPhone, you could potentially get those things. But in a dispatch system, when you get the call loaded onto the, onto the iPad, you're gonna be able to hit responding and it would bring that whole thing up. A lot of people aren't using, aren't using them because we were assuming we were gonna get some computer-aided dispatch on the iPads when they initially came out. But evidently, we're not. We'll wait till October and hopefully that it, hopefully this CAD system comes up and running, we'll, we'll have all that again. But right now, we have a, a, a large cellphone in our trucks that we're, we're, some people are using now.
Thank you, Mr. Greco.
If I may respond, uh, and again, everything you say is absolutely correct and I can hear the frustration in your voice. The situation you're experiencing is real and, and I'm not saying that it's not. What I am saying is I'm hearing dates and times that you guys are saying. And all I can tell you is when the funding was available and we went through our process, we purchased the system and that has only been in the last year's timeframe. We are implementing the system. We are on schedule. And everything that we've promised to deploy is coming through to the system now. I cannot tell you what you were promised in the future. All I know is what was funded and what we were given the ability to go ahead and purchase. And all of those items have been put in place. We are moving the CAD, the ABL, uh, automatic vehicle location forward and trying to get that in sooner, hopefully by the second week of February, as I indicated. We understand that this is important and we are moving. and we are moving forward quickly to make that happen.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Goots, I, this, my intent was not to have this a complaint fest, and especially for me. And, and sir, if you would, I, I didn't, I really didn't want to, to combat the, the, the union against fire, I, but what I wanted to do is, this report wasn't pleasing. And I wanted to, to, to show not only the Council, but our citizens, that fire rescue is dealing with some things that now we have grown up as a city. And we better make sure that our public safety, our fire, is growing just as fast as our city is. And so that's the reason why I brought this up. It was because of this audit, I just wanted to bring it all out in the open, so that I know what to ask for in the next year's budget. That was my reasoning behind this. Please, go ahead, Councilman Goots.
I'm pissed.
Alright.
I'm really pissed. A person who has been a public servant, who understands the need for communication, you know, a few seconds means an hour to somebody in law enforcement or first response. Damn, you're giving CPR to somebody, you're trying to get on the radio to call for some extra help, you've got a major fire, you're trying to get other units there? I don't like to bash any administration, anybody, but, you know, and, and we have a new administration, so I know their mind thinking of like, what the hell? But you're telling me this year back, you're telling me you've got one channel, and everyone's trying to get on to talk to a dispatcher? That's unacceptable for a fire, a, a unit in a city our size. That is unacceptable. And I'm sorry, if Chief LaCicero was here, I would be blasting him right now, because that makes no sense to me. And I'm livid to understand it. I've got firefighters out of firefighters, trying to get to, to people. When I look at my sick dad, when I need the fire to get there to my dad who's ill, I, I understand it. It's frustrating to me, and I know the firefighters have to be frustrated. So I'm glad that Chief Tripp is working, is doing what she can to move this thing forward, and Mr. Cicero is right, and we have to look at some, some allocations of budget. These guys have to have communications. So as fast as we can get this thing moving, sir, we got to get this moving, because they need to have communications. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make one more comment, Council. Even, even at its, the, the, the audit that was done, the eight and a half minutes is what, when we're not meeting 90% of the time? That's at the upper end of a response time for a medical or, or fire. So just so you know, even if we were meeting that goal, it would be at the upper end of the response times. It's, it's not somewhere in the middle or low. It's, that's why we need more stations and more manpower and more equipment, is because we're growing at a lot faster pace than our department is growing, the city is. So unless you put more manpower, more units and more stations in place to hold those units and manpower, your response times will continue to grow, because you don't have enough units to, to mobilize to, to respond to those calls. So that eight and a half minutes is an upper end. It's not the middle or, or the low end. And we appreciate Chief Tripp's diligent work along with her staff to, to move this, the needle, because it ain't been moved in ten years.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Chief Tripp, are you, are you finished, Chief Tripp, or you have more to add?
Councilman Vera.
I'll tell you what, I'll, I don't, I, I don't want to continually, at least, interrupt the presentation. I'll just go after Chief Tripp is finished, if I may.
I'm sorry, Chief, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
Just once again, Council, before I go, if there's any information you do need, I think part of the issue here is sharing where we are and how we're moving forward, and I will be happy to ensure that not only you, the Chief of Staff's office, we're working with Chief Tripp, and as well as the unions are well aware of where we are in the process and how fast we're moving forward. And if there's anything we can do to help address some of our radio situations, or anything else that hasn't been done already, or won't be taken care of in the next few months, we will make sure that we do that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, and if I may, Mr. Chair, I want to be clear, by, by saying I, I didn't want to go in the middle, I wasn't criticizing anybody who was speaking, et cetera, et cetera. I just wanted to go just afterwards, et cetera. For example, Councilman Goots, who served for, how many years as a police officer? Thirty, twenty-six, I was going to say, twenty-six years is, is extremely passionate. Of all seven of us, he's the only one who's worn a uniform as a first responder, so his passion is very understandable, and, and his passion is commendable, 100%, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Tripp, anything else before we move on to eighty-five?
Well, I was going to finish the second part of eighty-four.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So the second part of eighty-four, it's up on this slide as well. TFR personnel not completing the vehicle inspection report and monitoring the vehicles. Fleet maintenance is online, if you need additional protection, but prior to my being placed in this position, administrative directive was implemented on December first that was created. It was verified by risk management as well as fleet maintenance. It is implemented on all the vehicles now. We're looking forward to including that into the quarterly inspections, and as well as when the vehicles go to get PM. So if you need an addition information, I believe fleet maintenance is on the line. They did verify.
Any questions or comments from Council?
I, I have a comment very quickly, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank goodness for Station Nine. They're the ones that do the, the majority of the fleet maintenance, if not all of it. Is, is there any way that personnel, I believe it's EBTs?
EBTs.
Can be spread out so that they can do, I, I know that you have certain lifts, I know that you have certain tools, I know that you have certain things that you have to do. But in my, my understanding, you pull an engine out of one station, let's say Station Thirteen, and have to take it down to Station Nine, that, that's a truck that's out of, out of service. Is there any way these EBTs can take care of smaller things without having to take trucks out of service?
Fleet?
I can answer that.
Please.
Good afternoon, Council. Gary Stewart, City of Tampa Fleet Manager. Um, LaCicero, yes, we do have on-road technicians that actually could go out to the sites and do these repairs as needed. They're on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they're always there, ready to serve.
Fantastic. Can, can we in the future start contemplating, maybe somewhere in the north end, having a station much like Station Nine, that could do this maintenance on, on our equipment?
Yes, sir, yes, we can.
That can be part of my second presentation.
Then, I'm sorry, Chief, you got, you got the mic.
He's thinking ahead of you, Joe.
That's all I have for item number eighty-four.
Okay, thank you very much. We now go to item number eighty-five. Yes, sir, Councilman Carlson.
Just, you know, conversations like this take a lot of time, and I just want to thank, I think it was Councilman Citro and maybe Miranda who suggested this one. But we, you, you see, we all have our areas of expertise and our own experience that we bring, and, and we all see things that others don't see, even though we're all watching carefully. And I think this kind of time is some of the most valuable time that we spend, because there's always new information that comes out, and for the public, I think it's especially important, because the public wants more information. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, one last thing. I, I thank everybody for coming down here, everybody from fleet maintenance to Sub-54, to our, our Chief for coming down here. When I saw this, this audit, I, I was taken aback. And then after talking to the union, talking to the Chief, I, I, I found out that although it may be accurate, there is always room for improvement, and improvement not only from the firefighters, but from the city. If we can't help the firefighters do their job, we, the city, are doing a disservice. So I thank you all for coming down.
Great. Item number eighty-five. Go ahead, Chief.
So item number eighty-five, basically, the staff needs to present a report of a plan of action for relief for Station Thirteen right here and right now. So, I came up with a couple of areas of how the city can assist with providing relief for Station Thirteen. Station Thirteen, of course, is dear to my heart. I did two tours there. I know what the men and women are going through as far as running the calls. I know how exhausting it can be and how taxing it can be on the body. I have been away from Station Thirteen probably six, seven years, and nothing has grown up there as far as the increase of staff, as well as equipment, besides the peak units. But the city is still growing in the northern area, and I feel like Tampa Fire Department has not grown with it. So a couple of recommendations that I can do for immediate relief, meaning a thirty-day fix. We will have to do some relocating of units, and when I say relocating units, I'm looking to relocate the aerial truck that's at Station Thirteen, and put another engine in that position. That will help Engine Thirteen with the calls in the area. Due to the fact we have a over a million dollar vehicle running basic calls, I think that's wearing tear, and of course, that calls more, wearing tear on the vehicle, put the trucks out of service. So if we put an engine up there, that will help decrease the calls. As I look at the rescue calls, the rescue calls are pretty much stable. They have decreased with the additional rescue car that's at Station Thirteen, that's Rescue Twenty-four. If we put an engine up there, that will assist Engine Thirteen. Engine Thirteen call volume have not changed or decreased, according to the data that I have. If I relocate Station, I'm sorry, Rescue Truck Thirteen to Station Eleven. Got to put this on.
Yeah. Turn the light way, there it is. There you go.
So currently, we'll take Station, Truck Thirteen from Station Thirteen, put it over at Station Eleven. Station Thirteen is currently in District Three, Station Eleven's is District Four. The plan is to put another engine, which we call Engine Twenty-four, at Station Thirteen, to help compress with that. That would be a quick thirty-day fix. Along with that, that would cause some additional FTE positions to fulfill that engine. An engine, I'm sorry, a captain, a driver, and a firefighter, okay? With that, we can also take our peak cars. Currently, we have two peak cars. They only work peak hours, meaning from eight o'clock to eight o'clock, twelve-hour shifts, Tuesday through Saturday, ten o'clock to ten o'clock at night, Tuesday through Saturday. We could take those vehicles, change the peak hours, have those vehicles available seven days a week versus five. Take two hours off each day, make them ten-hour cars, cars. That would assist the northern end with transports, as well as the volume of calls they have. We will reassign Station Eleven to District Three. We will reassign Station Seven to District Four. That means that we'll keep the same amount of stations in each district, that would also allow truck company in each district.
Chief, what are the border, what are the borderlines of three and four, the District Three and Four? What are the borderlines?
Station Thirteen goes all the way the northern to Nebraska. As far as west, east, it goes all the way to Fifty-second Street, north of the Fowler, and south, it's kind of like Rolet Park.
Is that District Three or District Four?
That's District Three.
District Three, okay.
That's for Station Thirteen.
Now, currently, does Thirteen come down, me and Mr. Vera both share Bush Boulevard. So does Thirteen come across Bush at any time?
Yes, all the time.
That's what I figured. That's what I figured.
Yeah, that's the First Lawn territory.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And Station Eleven actually, since it moved far to west, it actually come up to Nebraska now.
To help out, okay, thank you.
Okay. So that is a quick thirty-day fix that we can implement within thirty days.
Any questions or comments from Council?
If, if, I'll, if I, if I may, I'll go at the end of, I, I don't want to, just-
Okay. Now, moving forward, as I spoke earlier to, for the fire department to grow with the City of Tampa, there would be some additional needs and requests from Council, as well as the City of Tampa. Station Eleven, on this slide, Station Eleven, old Station Eleven was at Seven Ten Fairbanks. That station was relocated to Fifteen Hundred West Waters. Currently, TPD K-nine unit is in that location. TPD K-nine unit is looking to build their own facility at the Trainister on Thirty-fourth Street. If Tampa Fire Rescue could obtain that building, go in, look at the infrastructure, put another engine and a rescue car there, take one of the peak vehicles, which is Peak Twenty-four, I'm sorry, Peak Fifty or Fifty-One, put it in station along with an engine. We would need to increase the budget for another engine, another rescue car, as well as FTEs. That's pretty much like a six to twelve-month fix. During this six to twelve-month fix, this will also give us time to analyze our data. The CAD system should be in place, the ABL should be in place. We should be able to get some sort of GSI information and determine where we would need to locate an additional station in that northern area. I predicted the long-term, five-year, one to five-year ago, complete the data analysis for the service delivery area for the City of Tampa. Budget for peak units to become a Twenty-four car, as well as Peak Fifty-One. Budget for a new fire station in fiscal year twenty-three. Budget for a fire station in twenty-four. One of those fire stations down in the northern end, Station, I'm sorry, Station Twenty, I got the numbers wrong, I apologize, Twenty-four and Twenty-five. So budget for new fire station, which is Twenty-four. And that would take that vehicle out of Station Thirteen. Budget for a new fire station, Station Twenty-five, as well. Budget for sixteen FTEs for the northern station, and inside that new station, put a heavy rescue for the northern end. Currently, our heavy rescue is located downtown, downtown Tampa. If we have a major incident on the northern end, it takes at least a good twenty to thirty minutes for a heavy rescue to go up to the north.
Makes sense.
We also need to include for the growth in downtown Tampa, to budget for another station, as well as the FTEs vehicles to go along with that. This will also provide immediate relief for the northern area, as well as the City of Tampa, as well as provide the quick response to the service in the community, as well as relief for personnel throughout the City of Tampa, and help decrease the stress load that the units are going through now. I know I kind of jumped around, but you have any questions?
Any questions, Councilman Vera?
Thank you very much. I, I, I want to thank you, Chief, for your hard work on this issue. I, I really do. You've been a, a pleasure to deal with always, and I mean that. You know, the statistics that, that, that are relevant, that I'll be talking about, that you've been talking about, call for leadership from the City of Tampa, it calls for leadership from City Council, in terms of building a financial bridge in, in, in the administration, and, and I know we're going to be up to it. We see the problems that we have, we see the crises that we have. Now the issue is, are we going to fix them? And if so, how are we going to build that financial bridge to fix them? I, I'm, I'm willing to put up hammer and nail, so to speak financially, to fix that problem. I, I've told my friends at Station Thirteen, I was with them yesterday in the morning, and I told them that this year, 2021, we're in, is going to be the year of Thirteen. We are going to continually, as I'll talk about, deal with Station Thirteen, and there are numerous crises that we have. It's, it's, it's an abomination, what's happened over at Thirteen, with regards to the, the stress, et cetera, that the men and women who are there working. I know we're going to be up to the task, it goes without saying. This is a, a crisis of territory served. The men and women at Thirteen serve a territory that I think is far too big. We'll get to some remedies on that. It's a crisis, like I've talked about, of equity. The, the communities that Thirteen serves are communities, many that are underserved. Certain areas in the university area, et cetera, have child poverty rates that are more than double the citywide City of Tampa rate. And it's a crisis, as we all know, for the men and women who serve there. They, they, you know, you're a first responder, whether you're a police or firefighter, you're going to take hits, right? You put the stress of Thirteen, and then you put the stress of COVID-19 and this pandemic, and God help you. So it's a real significant burden. We know the facts here. We know that in 2019, there were eleven thousand calls for service for this station. About one-seventh of all calls in the City of Tampa Fire Rescue came to Thirteen. That's a lot. That's a lot. We know that in 2019, Station Thirteen was the busiest, had the twentieth busiest engine in the United States, and the fifty-fourth busiest ladder in the United States of America. These are really, really good steps that you're highlighting here. I know that you have worked very, very hard for that. If, 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 if at the end of this, we could stand up and give you a round of applause, I'd love that, because I think you're doing a great job. I mean that. You know, I'll be making a motion that after the, the first term changes are made, that we come back with a report forty-five days afterwards, just to make sure that these changes, which, which are going to cost money, right, and be additional investments in the North Tampa area, are getting the changes and the progress that we want for the men and women at, at Station Thirteen, who, who we're all committed to, every last one of us are. You know, my, my motion that I made was, was two-tiered, and, and the second half is going to come back to us in March. It was for today to have immediate relief for Station Thirteen, because it is unacceptable, the conditions that these men and women work under, and it is unacceptable that these communities, many underserved communities, have got to be subject to this. Step number two would be coming back in March, where we're going to be talking about a bigger picture of, of response times, and to my friend and colleague, Councilman Citro, thank you so much for your leadership in bringing out this other issue, just a, a lot of deficits that we have to look at. lot of deficits that we have to look at and that are going to require real attention. But in March, we got to start looking at, really, right now, um, the, the long-term solutions that we have to these crises. These crises aren't going away, and they can only go away or get better if we continue to be committed to it. Um, and, and I know that we're going to. In March, we're going to be talking about new fire stations, new fire station for north Tampa, potentially for new Tampa. The K-Bar Ranch area continues to grow out there. You talk to stations twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three out there. Sometimes you have waiting times of fifteen minutes out there, I've been told, again, just, just from conversations, et cetera. Four out of the six fire stations in the city of Tampa that have the longest response times are three, three, six, four, seven, uh, the, the, the new Tampa area. We're going to be talking about channel side, um, and, and, and frankly, how to pay for it, you know, how, how to pay for it. How do we look at our budget and pay for these? We all agree that these are needs. Are we going to have the political leadership in this city to pay for it? I say, hell yes, we are. I know we are. We're going to do it, because that's what we're here for. Um, you know, station thirteen, frankly, if you look at it, that area, that whole area needs a Marshall Plan, right? Uh, beginning with transportation, economic development, et cetera, et cetera, but certainly with public safety, I think that's very, very important. And, and this is part of a motion that I made about a year ago, which was for a citywide master plan. At first, it was just for fire. Then I said, hey, let's also talk about, uh, uh, law enforcement and police, to look at our entire city, throughout all of our city, see where our deficits are at with regards to public safety, see how much it cost, how much it will cost to build a financial bridge to remedy those deficits, and then talk about solutions to getting there. Um, I, I, I really wanted to thank a firefighter at station thirteen. You know, we, we passed a new, um, or we got a new, uh, uh, a rescue vehicle for thirteen not too long ago, um, and, and then we got in the budget that we passed, uh, what, five, six months ago, design money for a new fire station. I think to myself, hey, good, we're making progress at thirteen. Clayton Weeks over at station thirteen called me up and said, we got a long way to go, Vera, a very long way to go. And I knew that there were big challenges out there, challenges that we were working at for a new fire station out there, but all of this conversation that we're talking about right here, a lot of it came about because of Clayton Weeks giving me a call. So I just wanted to give a real shout out to, uh, to my friend Clayton, who's such a very fine gentleman. Um, and, and I know that in, in the Castro administration, that, that we have a continued friend, um, in these issues with, with Chief Bennett, with, with yourself, uh, uh, et cetera. We have a real friend. We're going to work together to get this job done. For station thirteen, again, this is going to be the year of station thirteen. They've been ignored for too long. It is unacceptable, and we're going to remedy that this year, and we're going to continue to work together on that. Um, I, I, I know that these changes cost, uh, uh, some, some funds. I was talking to Chief Bennett about that. I know it's coming out of, uh, a, a particular, uh, uh, funding source, so, because nothing comes free, you know? Um, and ultimately, it comes to the kind of level of service that the people of the city of Tampa want with, with fire, as well as police EMS, et cetera. What, what kind of a level of service do they want? I think they want a pretty good level of service, because if that was my seventy-two-year-old mom who lives in Temple Terrace, not the city of Tampa, um, I'd want the best level of service, and we are all committed to that. But in closing, just chief, I wanted to thank you so much for your hard work. You're just beginning at this, and you're doing a heck of a great job. So thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Dingfelder, you had something, then Citro, then Goode's?
I did. Um, thank you, chief. Um, I don't know if you still have access to the, uh, to the slide presentation. Um, can you go back? Let's see. Well, it was one, it was, it was one right before the end that had a list.
Let go!
The one that had the, the list about things we need to do, what stations we need to rebuild, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I had a couple, like a six, twelve month, and then the one of five year.
Not, not that one.
So the one of five year.
Go, go to the, the other one. There you go. So what sort of money are we talking about? Has that been even ballparked in terms of figure for capital improvements such as acquisition and building fire stations, or for day-to-day operational expenses with, with the, uh, additional twenty-seven FTEs over two years?
So I've, um, spoken with the chief of staff and the budget office finance, and they're working on that information.
So, so there, there's a ballpark, or?
I don't have a ballpark, but they've been working on it.
Do you want those?
No, thank you.
Whoever's speaking, please mute yourself.
So you, you had to pick them up off the floor when you showed them this, or?
Pretty much I did.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be hearing more later. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Councilman Citro, then Councilman Goode's.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, first off, I want to reiterate what, uh, excuse me, I would like to join in with, uh, Councilman Vera. Chief, you have remained calm under fire, and for, for your first time up here, you didn't need a, uh, a blindfold or a cigarette. So I am hoping that our mayor is listening at this time that you become permanent chief. I also want to say that we all have our different districts, uh, we at large here, over the whole city, but I know that there are a lot of citizens that may be saying, well, we need a new fire, we need a fire. But just to see what has happened when the city council is getting involved, uh, we got a new fire rescue when, uh, Councilman Goode's asked for it. Councilman Vera asked for help at station thirteen, that's on its way. Uh, I am hoping that we will get that station downtown sooner than later. I also want to thank, um, administration, Chief Bennett, and, and others that have helped in, in putting this together, and their help in helping, uh, fire rescue. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Goode's.
You know, it, it all started back in our first year. But a little station called station number ten, engine ten. And I look back to where we had to compromise some deals were made with the administration to, to get that moving. We still didn't get what we needed at engine ten per se to get that place, I think it's the number two oldest station in the city, if I'm not mistaken. So that tells you how old it is. So we can do bonds for potentially pipes, we can do bonds for a lot of different things, but eventually, there, there may need to be a talk about bonds at, at reference to getting our emergency services up in the city with some of these fire stations, which includes ten, which is, which is horrible down there. So those may need to be compensations later on, coming down the line of, of some type of bonds to be able to deal with, uh, our, our emergency services for these trucks, for these buildings. But I just sit back and I say that little engine number ten that has created a wave for Mr. Vera to, to deal with thirteen and some of the other issues, and of course, I keep saying that we have to look at channel side and downtown. I'm glad, chief, that you talked about bringing a higher, higher vehicle to the north end, because you're right. You've got to bring a vent truck from way someplace south of here all the way to the north end, or a big, heavy ladder truck, you know, heavy equipment, and we have a big city. So we have to have equipment everywhere ready to go, because what if you have two situations? You never know what can happen. So I, I applaud you for the work, and like Mr. Citro said, you've been under fire very quickly with a lot of things to move, and, and you rise into the challenge, and we, we thank you, we thank the administration, uh, for looking at you as the person.
Please mute yourself if you're not speaking.
So this council says thank you at this particular point, because we see the, the work you're doing, and again, uh, the master plan in March, and hopefully, we can talk about these issues about how we're going to do the whole city.
And I think Caitlin likes her a lot, so.
I don't know who's speaking, but please mute yourself, you're interrupting the city council meeting.
No, I just think the best part about her is she just has a good attitude.
Good, good attitude, who just said that?
Please mute yourself.
Good attitude.
I think that that would be good. I think that was the problem with Rachel, is that Rachel.
This is, that's not good.
Kind of had a hater attitude.
Can, 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 can T.I. cut that?
And maybe thought she knew more than her in some things.
Maybe we're interrupting their meeting.
And then she didn't want to multitask, because I think she thought she was too, I don't know.
Who was she referring to?
Do we know who this is?
Whoever is called in, you need to mute yourself.
Seemed like she was going to be, but she just.
Do we know who this is, so we can call them? Because I don't want anything said.
Do you have a list? Does, does the clerk, does the clerk have a list of who's online presently?
It's not anyone that's logged into the webinar, they had to use the call-in only function.
And you don't know then?
I'm not able to mute them.
And who would be calling in if they're not somebody for a public hearing?
I'd be a little useless with stuff like that for a little while, till the baby's here.
Well, everybody remembered that voice when that person.
I don't recognize the voice.
But I don't want her, I want her to take.
But it would be more just to look at what we're doing, not to actually do the work.
Is it one of the attorneys, is it the legal department? I don't recognize.
I don't.
Compartmentalize her, what she can actually do.
An IT can't cut it, huh?
Is it someone with Tampa Fire? You said that, uh, who was, TNI was on the line, or someone else?
Let's take five and see if we can get to the bottom of that. Can we take five?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess.
Yeah.
All right. Good, Luke, Chuck's excited.
Can we just listen to that?
Yeah. We're going to be here till dinner.
We're gonna be here till dinner.
Can I?
Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. I'm calling all you party people. Come on, get up and dig that fucker half-bad. I have a fucking sensation that is better than a nation. Get up, clap your hands and feel the groove. You see people like you. Need people like you. All together, getting tore off all your feet. Take your time, relax your mind. Come on, come on and leave my fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Know it? Yeah. Yeah, I've seen you creeping out there on the dance floor. I want you to put your hands together. Like that, come on. Yeah, you feel it? That's when you gotta lose it in. Yeah, there you go. Just move your left leg. That's it. Move your left leg. Yeah, with the, come on. Move your right hand in the air. Mm-hmm, that's it. Lean left, lean right, lean front, lean back, come on. You gotta ride it, baby. It's just a fucking sensation. My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? My fucking sensation.
It's all gone crazy. My mom and dad say to me, said it wasn't like this back in 1993. Right there, your money was money. Allowed to say something funny. And you could chat up a honey in the street. Back then, they didn't tweet. They read the papers, talked to friends, write to their faces, didn't Snapchat. They just chit-chat. Yeah, let's never think about that. One day we'll wake up and smell the coffee. It don't feel right. But it's too late to try and stop it. No, it don't feel right. Getting stressed out all for nothing. No, not me. You call me stupid, too laid-back. Wanna live it like 93. No, it don't feel right. I still find my own way. With no sat-nive in the car. Making my own coffee. And it don't cost me the stars. We're overloaded with wires. They're passing through us like fire. Can't tell the good ones from liars anymore. Back then, they didn't tweet. They read the papers, talked to friends, write to their faces, didn't Snapchat. They just chit-chat. Yeah, let's never think about that. One day we'll wake up and smell the coffee. It don't feel right. But it's too late to try and stop it. No, it don't feel right. Getting stressed out all for nothing. No, not me. You call me stupid, too laid-back. Wanna live it like 93. No, it don't feel right. You call me stupid, too laid-back. Wanna live it like 93, yeah. Okay. Tell me all the friends you follow. Who is real and who is hollow? There today, what's on tomorrow? What you think about that? Tell me all the friends you follow. Who is real and who is hollow? There today, what's on tomorrow? What you think about that? One day we'll wake up and smell the coffee. It don't feel right. But it's too late to try and stop it. No, it don't feel right. Getting stressed out all for nothing. No, not me. You call me stupid, too laid-back. Wanna live it like 93. Tell me all the friends you follow. Who is real and who is hollow? There today, what's on tomorrow? What you think about that? Hear the sounds of the sins that won't let you sleep. Under care of the hands that won't let you leave. I've been saved up here just way too long. Holding you together just to get along. I keep my eyes open till the echo sleep. And I'm back in your arms again. Listen to your heart. Let it sing to you. Joy is scattered in mine. Forget your deja vu. Find a perfect calm before we order you. Listen to your heart. Let it sing to you. Listening to you under warm sunbeams. Coated crystal nights asking all our dreams. Laying into blue as I kiss the sea. Soft tipple of winds setting spirits free. Nowhere to go but out from here. We'll be on our own when we disappear. Listen to your heart. Let it sing to you. Listen to your heart. Let it sing to you. Listen to your heart. Let it sing to you. Listen to your heart. Let it sing to you. Joy is scattered in mine. Forget your deja vu. Find a perfect calm before we order you. Listen to your heart. Let it sing to you.
Carlson? Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Thank you so much. All right. Chief, go ahead.
Don't know if you have any additional questions for me?
Any other questions or comments for the chief? Hearing none? Thank you very much. We appreciate that report. We appreciate all your hard work. Uh, Councilmember Viera said that you deserve a, a, a round of applause. Uh, which I, I agree with. Uh, I hear nothing, again, nothing but, but wonderful things. Especially from these two gentlemen here, uh, which are at the lectern, uh, Mr. Carter and, uh, Greco? Go ahead, sir. Oh, the mustache is back.
Yes.
Man-stash.
Just has no shape, no number. Uh, thank you. Andrew Carter, Vice President, Tampa Firefighters Local 754. We just want to say how impressed we are with the short-term, mid-term, long-term goal. This really is a strategic plan that we can get quantifiable and qualitative data. And we can make sure that we're making these response times. And if we're not, we can adjust those units in that territory. This really has been a brain trust. Chief Tripp, along with their interim chiefs that are in the back, along with ourselves, worked together to formulate a plan. Mostly theirs, but they did take some input from us and the units that are responding on the street. So, we've seen this much movement in six weeks with a learning curve of becoming a fire chief. With a learning curve of becoming division chiefs with a Super Bowl and a pandemic. So, this is tremendous movement forward.
Don't forget that accreditation.
Also-
And accreditation.
Also accreditation, she can speak to that. So, I just want to say this is a tremendous working relationship and we look forward to it.
Great. If you're happy, we're happy. And the people are happy. Thank you very much. That concludes item number-
If I may, Mr. Chair, just really- And, and I, I was gonna make these motions at the end, but just to let you know, Chief, I was gonna make a motion, um, to want the changes. So, let me ask you, if I may, how long should it take, uh, for the, right here, right now, it's funny that made it in the motion, uh, language, uh, changes to be made and be implemented and in effect?
If you can give me 30 days.
Okay, cool.
No more than 45, only because the Super Bowl is here. And, uh, we are working the logistics of that. I would need to get with, uh, TNI, just to get our equipment, a lot of the equipment for that apparatus we do have in store. We would just need to make just some minor logistic changes as far as, um, zoning.
Okay, so, ju- just from my motion at the end, and then also, I was gonna make a motion, I always like to tell y'all before, it's just something that came up yesterday with some of the trees around Station 13, to have them trimmed. That apparently the, uh, vehicles going through there always get hit by the trees. So, I was just gonna, just ask for a report in that regard, but just let you know that's coming down.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you again so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Item number 86, we have a memo from, uh, Ms. Abby Feely regarding renaming of the street in front of Brown's Memorial Church. Any questions or comments, Councilman Guth? I know this was your motion, sir.
I believe Ms. Feely's gonna speak to that, sir.
Thank you very much, Ms. Feely. I know you have a, a memo sent, but if you had anything, go ahead.
Good afternoon, City Council. Abby Feely, Director of Development and Growth Management. Um, I did provide you with a re- memorandum concerning, uh, street renaming within the city, what our standard operating procedures are, how we work to ensure that, um, we have a structured system for both our residents and our citizens, I mean, and our visitors as they come into the city. Um, I had an opportunity, um, I, I did provide, I think, in, in my memorandum, just kind of an overview of where we are, what our recommendation is. Um, and, uh, what many of you see around town that looks like a street renaming is really an honorarium. Um, that I do have some pictures of those, uh, if anyone is interested in seeing those. But I think, as I discussed, uh, with Councilman Guth, in, in this instance, an honorarium may be the way to go, and that would be done by mobility. It would not be an official street renaming.
Councilman Guth.
Me and Ms. Feely, uh, we had a conversation of the, uh, you know, I always say, "Don't tell me what you can't do, what you can do." And we came up with something that we figured we possibly can do. So, uh, I'm gonna make a motion at the end and register our mobility department to look in, uh, about the, the honorary sign for Bishop Williams. I also have another one on my desk for Reverend Dr. Reed as well, so I'll probably just do it all in one shot to get those out of the way. But again, uh, Ms. Feely, thank you for, uh, taking my calls and us working through what we can do to make our community better and honor those who need to be honored. So, thank you again.
The one thing I, I did want to follow up on is that, and I did talk to, um, Vic Beatty this morning, uh, as well about this. Um, you know, we, we don't want to make this standard practice throughout the city, so we should look and work together, probably come back at a later time to discuss what would be some appropriate parameters, um, for this if we do seek to move forward. Perhaps for your consideration, a limitation of X number each year, you know, it always has been someone who is deceased, uh, some other criteria, uh, so that we can continue to support an organized system. And of course, as you just were speaking about, a very functional emergency services system to ensure that we're getting expedition services to our citizens.
I would agree, and I look forward to that conversation with Vic, that we can bring something back to, uh, to look at doing that. So, thank you again for your help.
Thank you very much. That concludes item number 86. Item number 87 is a motion by Councilmember Viera, uh, regarding, uh, opposition of HB 53 regarding preemption of City of Tampa's apprenticeship ordinance. Councilmember Viera, this is your motion, sir. Go ahead.
As much as I'd love to talk for 30 minutes about it, I know we want to go home. So, no, just saying, I thank you, Mr. Shelby, for your hard work in that regard. And, um, you know, this is another terrible attack on, um, on local government, but in an area that's very critical. We've been working in the last year on fashioning together a state-certified apprenticeship ordinance, and we're not finished in our, in our talks, but we're on our way to something that is very good, very collaborative and whatnot. And, uh, this would be a, um, you know, a measure that, that is a hammer that sees all local municipal, uh, efforts, uh, a- as a nail. It, it's overbroad, it's punitive, and, uh, and it should certainly be defeated. And I hope that our friends in Tallahassee, um, uh, reject this. So, I'm just, urge council support. Thank you.
Would you like to go ahead and move that resolution?
Uh, yes, I would.
We have a motion from Councilmember Viera to move this resolution, item number 87. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Very good. Thank you very much, sir. Next up, we have item number 88, which, uh, is tied into item number nine, which we did not vote on, um, regarding the city's flood ordinance. Ms. Feely, I believe, is there, you are on the line, uh, if you'd like to go ahead?
Good afternoon, Council. Uh, this Abby Feely, I'm here today with Dave Jennings, um, our Flood Plane Manager, J.C. Hutchinson, our Building Official. And, uh, we do have a presentation for you this afternoon in relation to the updated flood maps and the model flood ordinance. Kate Wells is here with us as well. The clerk has that? Thank you.
Go ahead. It's on the screen.
Okay, we're gonna go, um, ahead and get started. I know many of you have heard from different, uh, venues throughout the city and different activities that we have been in the process of updating our flood maps. First slide, please. The city does participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, there are two main prior- or the NFIP has two main goals, and that is to provide, uh, our citizens with access to flood insurance. And the second is to mitigate and reduce, uh, comprehensive flood risk. And a lot of that comes through the way we build within these areas. Um, all of this and our participation results in a reduced flood premium, a reduction, um, in flood insurance for our citizens. So, we continue to work on this, and this is done through a rating system. Uh, we are currently at a five, and many of the measures we're gonna talk about today will help us to position to get into a CRS rating of four and also result in a greater reduction in premiums for our residents. Next slide, please. The, the flood maps are typically updated every 10 years. Our current maps contain, uh, 22,726 properties. The new maps, uh, include an additional 10,200 properties, uh, within the special flood hazard areas. And these are typically, um, our V and, um, AE, um, districts. On the next, uh, slide, I have a map of just the southern peninsula, um, up, well, it goes a little bit further north, but there's really not too many properties north of there. This is a coastal, uh, map update. So, on the left, you see, uh, our current and, and the main colors there for you are the red and the deeper orange. That is that V and AE zones. And on the right side, you see our new maps and that increase to those areas, uh, that are now contained within, um, the special flood hazard areas. We've done a series of public outreach, um, when the maps were, uh, being considered for update. We did send out, um, documentation to each of the affected property owners. Um, in addition, we're on the next slide, sorry. Uh, in addition, we did hold public information workshops in partnership with Hillsborough County, uh, at the Jan B. Platt Library. We had about 500 people on April 7th and about 700 people on April 4th that participated in these workshops. The majority of those residents happened to be in the county, but this was a joint effort between us and the county, uh, so we did hold those meetings. In relation to the height definition, which I'm gonna get into momentarily, which was also in the memorandum I provided, council did, um, adopt the new definition of height back in September of 2019. And subsequently, before it went to second reading, uh, there was some, um, public comment that came out, and we did hold public information meetings on the 18th and 20th of November in 2019. The next set of slides, I'm gonna ask Dave, uh, Jennings to speak to. I don't, I know it's the end of the day, you guys have had a lot today, uh, but I do want him to briefly go through some of these items so that you can understand where we are in the maps, what it means really for our buildings going forward. And then, um, also, what it means in relation to our flood ordinance and updating that to make clarifications. Dave?
Good afternoon, Council. Uh, thanks for taking the time, I know it's been a long day. Uh, just wanted to give you some ideas on, uh, acronyms. Uh, we were talking about that a little earlier. Uh, the acronyms you're gonna hear a lot about is gonna be, uh, uh, base flood elevation, which is a BFE, and a DFE, which is design flood elevation. Your BFEs are, are typically labeled with elevations, and those elevations are what the flood maps, uh, determine to be, uh, the, the one-year chance of a historical flood, a 100-year event. Uh, as you all know, um, we've had quite a few of those 100-year events over the last five years, so it happens more often than that. Uh, some of the BFEs, uh, established do not have, uh, flood elevations. Those have to be determined by, uh, the, the City of Tampa Flood Administrator, which is me. We have to determine what those elevations would be, but those are mostly in the interior areas, which is a riverine or up in New Tampa, where we have some of the floodings up there. Uh, they are not a part of the coastal. Uh, the design flood elevation is a requirement that, that the maps do not provide. They only provide a base flood. The design flood elevation is what is provided to us in the Florida Building Code, which the Florida Building Code houses a lot of the determinations of technical requirements on how to build in a flood zone, whether it's a velocity zone, a VE, or an AE. Next slide. Thank you. I, I want to focus, this slide we've used in some other areas. I want to focus on the top left of that slide. Uh, in the velocity zones, you are not allowed to put in fill to put your structure on. Fill is prohibited. Uh, so all of the velocity zones and the increase of the velocity zones, the VE's, uh, along the coastal areas, uh, will not, even though the elevations have increased greatly, uh, some is as little as four feet, some as much as eight feet, you will not be putting a structure in on top of fill where the neighborhood could be impacted by drainage or additional flooding because of rainstorm. So, that is not an allowed item. You also do not, are not allowed to de- build a, uh, stem wall foundation vertically built it up. Those walls would have to either be breakaway or on the right two sides of that slide, they would be deep pile foundations- they would be deep pile foundations or actually stilted structures you would see in a velocity zone or the new limb wall line. Those are the things that you will see coming forward. But we just want to make sure we put in this slide to let everyone know that the fill is not allowed, so we will not be filling all the lots to then put structures on top of. They would have to be elevated structures. Next slide, please. The City of Tampa first adopted its first ordinance for flood ordinance in 2004. It was updated in 2008 when we received our new maps in 2008. It is within the City of Tampa's ordinance in Chapter 5-111 is the specific section. So we are updating that section. Some of the items in the proposed ordinance that you're looking at has local amendments to the Florida Building Code. As I said earlier, that Florida Building Code dictates technical requirements on how you build in a flood zone. We've added some additional amendments to that as we're required to do with the new state model flood ordinance. We've corrected the substantial damage. We've changed the language in it to make sure it's clear for our citizens. If you have a substantially damaged structure, you can receive money from your insurance companies towards removal and building a new structure, and they will provide monies for you to be able to elevate it to get it out of the flood zone. The substantial improvement, which everyone commonly calls the 50% rule for improvements, that we've changed some of the language, cleaned up the language so it's clear on how it's done. We've put in some new requirements for the improvement costs in that, how we determine substantial improvement. We're going to be using a standardized dollar value, so there will be no more someone providing estimates on work they're doing to their structure that they now have to go back and get fair market value because they're receiving some drywall from a friend of theirs. That becomes a huge problem for our citizens and also for staff on how we enforce that.
Mr. Jennings.
We're also giving the time period.
Mr. Jennings.
On substantial improvement we currently have in the code. We're improving that by clarifying the language to make sure it's understood that we have what is commonly called a look back, a one-year look back. So any structure that's being improved substantially, we will look at all the permits that were done within the last year and add on to that current request. That way, we can get more compliance on the structures to make sure we help our insurance. That item gives us some of the points that we get in our community service rating that gives us a lower insurance rate. That's a big dollar item that we are able to use. We're also going to be including a requirement for recording a non-conversion agreement where the area below the structure that does not comply to the design flood elevation, we're going to not only just limit it to 100 square feet for storage space, not for a parking garage, that's approvable, along with entry areas, you can add those on there, but additional square footages that you may want to close off, we're going to limit that and also require a recorded non-conversion agreement so that it will travel with the property, so owners buying property won't come underneath that they didn't, they weren't disclosed a title that that structure didn't comply. This way, we can help clean that up. That alone, I looked up for you today, that's going to give us between 30 and 60 additional points, and we're about 100 points off from reaching our goal of a category four. So we are very, very close on closing that out.
Thank you very much. Just a moment, sir. The clerk has asked me to, hold on a second. We're going to mute everyone because we still have that feedback of that other caller that's unknown, so we're just going to take a moment to do that.
Muted. Unmuted.
Su Ling, are we good to go?
Yes, we're good to go. Abby, you can unmute yourself.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jennings. I apologize for that. We had to clear up the uninvited noise. All right. Anything else, Ms. Feely? Anything? You're muted. If you could unmute yourself.
Okay. Sorry, I went to J.C.'s office, so thank you, Su Ling. Okay, we'll keep going.
All right.
That was pretty much my end of it. I'm going to pass it back off to Abby to talk about the next slide.
All right.
Okay. One other thing I just wanted to say on this slide is they're also going to use the standard international code council construction cost, which you all are familiar with from utilization within the bonus criteria. So that was, Dave mentioned that, in order to really limit any kind of construction cost, saying, well, we got this really cheap, so that's a zero, and that all feeds back into that substantial improvement, 50%. So, okay, we'll go on to the next slide. All of these items really work together. We update the maps, which then in turn result in us needing to update the ordinance. And then how it starts to play out in development is that now we are having to elevate structures in order to meet the base flood elevation. And I know you've had multiple discussions about this. The last piece to this is really that height piece. If we can advance to the next slide, please. I know Su Ling's in the middle of nine things. Thank you. So, right now, height, building height, is measured from finished grade. So when they tell a residential customer that they have to now elevate the structure from base flood four to base flood nine, and you're still leaving the grade at four, then there's five feet you're losing of the 35 feet that would come into play for your structure height in a residence. The definition that came to you back on September 2019 was to allow that height to be measured from the finished floor. And obviously, in areas that are not within the flood zones, those floors are not elevated, so roughly they are a grade. But this is really to accommodate, and if we go back to slide seven real quick, I'm sorry to do this to you, but if we could go back to that diagram with the house on the right there, that's really showing you when the finished floor has to be brought up and you have those breakaway spaces underneath, which are typically used for garages, so you're parking now under the structure, that height with, under our current code, would still be being measured from the floor, from the ground down at the bottom there. But if we adopt, and you did adopt on first reading, the height definition, that height would now be measured from the base flood elevation, which is the floor of the living space on this diagram roughly. And you can see that the air conditioning system utilities have to be out of that flood area as well. So that is the last component of our, we are on, now back to slide nine. We are, that is the last component of really addressing this item holistically and bringing in all of the different elements from the map and FEMA acknowledgement to the ordinance to the definitions, so now that everything would be in alignment. That being said, we did also, I just wanted to let you know, we spoke with TBBA on Tuesday to refresh and go over this before the meeting, and we have also committed to do a workshop with them after this is adopted to work through some of those typical construction elements. We have also done some outreach. If you will oblige us just for about two minutes, I wanted J.C. to share with you some of the outreach we have done to the developers and the development world to let them know what is going on, how to get vested, what they'll be on the hook for moving forward. If he could share his screen for just a minute, we have two slides to share with you. The one under the camera.
Good afternoon, council. We just wanted to show you real quickly on our website, we've got several places where we've tried to let our building and design community know what's going on. Across our new website, across the top there, you see Construction Services, so that's a banner there. Here on the right is an email that went out to all the seller users, whether you had an active permit or not, you were notified of the potential new changes in the flood map, and even before then, in December as well, of any plans, because we really didn't want people to be caught kind of in a no man's land trying to get these plans approved before the 21st, when that official map change happens. So even permits that have been in process, they were given this note that's been put on the site plan, so they are aware that the permit has to be issued to be vested into the previous maps. Thank you.
Thanks, J.C. So where we are today is, we would like to answer any of the questions you may have based on what we presented or the memorandum that I presented to you based on, for this information. We would ask that you would bring the flood ordinance back, make a recommendation or a motion that it would be brought back to you on first reading on February 4th. And then also that the definition of height would travel with the ordinance on second reading to bring all of those items for your approval and to move forward on this and have all of these items adopted. That being said, we're here for any questions that you may have. The one thing I did want to mention, I did want to say again, thank you for allowing us to bring this forward today. Once the state notifies us at the end of the month, I believe the end of January, we have six months for this adoption to take place, and knowing COVID and all the other different circumstances, and to ensure that we do keep our participation current and that our residents are receiving the discounts with their flood premiums. The timing of this was critical for us, and I do appreciate that accommodation today and helping us to move this forward.
Thank you very much. Any council members with questions? Hearing none. This goes back to item number nine.
If we can, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Martin Shelby. If I understood, Ms. Feely, there's a motion related to this particular item, number 88, is it?
88. And then it says, if you look at item number nine, it says C-88.
Right. And with regard to number 88, if we just confirm with Ms. Feely, that involves a motion to set this, to come back with an ordinance for first reading on February 4th. Is that correct, Ms. Feely, this particular number? Was that your request?
Ms. Feely, February 4th?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless, Kate, the ordinance that they have for consideration today on item nine.
Yes.
We could take that as a separate motion.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Can I have someone read the ordinance for item number nine?
If I can, Mr. Chairman, forgive me. I just want to be clear. Is a motion, a separate motion needed for number 88 to come back on the 4th with an ordinance related to this particular item?
So moved.
Ms. Feely.
Second.
Mr. Shelby, I'm sorry. It would be that the motion that we would like is that if we're taking the first reading today of the ordinance that is on item nine, then whenever that is set for second reading, we would ask that the definition for the height be brought back on second reading to correspond with that. So depending on what that date will be based on your action today, I would ask that those items align for second reading.
And if I can ask the clerk, what is that date? If you know when that item number nine would come back for second reading?
Number nine would come back for second reading on February 4th, 2021, at 9:30 a.m.
So that would be acceptable to you, Ms. Feely, to have this motion for number 88, set this to come back in the form of a first reading as well for this particular subject?
It would be a second reading for the definition of height. The first reading already took place on September 19th of 2019.
Okay. And how is this related then to number nine, please? We need to read number nine right now. Okay. Why don't we do that then?
Who would like to read item number nine?
I'll take it.
Councilman Dingfelder, item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regard to file number 2021-8, Chapter 5, read the following ordinance for first reading consideration. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, making comprehensive revisions. The City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Building Code, repealing and replacing in its entirety, Section 5-111, flood-resistant construction, adopting local administrative and technical amendments to the Florida Building Code, applicability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for accessibility, providing effective guidance.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we set item 88, which is, well, set the Chapter 27 amendments for height for second reading. They've already been read for first reading a while back for second reading on February 4th at 9:30.
All right, we have a motion for Councilman Dingfelder.
Okay.
Second for Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Does that settle that?
Thank you, council.
Great. Yes?
Will item number nine need a roll call vote, Chair?
Should we have a roll call vote, Mr. Shelby, for item number nine?
Yeah.
It was the first reading.
I believe we normally take those for first reading. Did we do that this morning?
Not for this item, no.
No, but we did for the other first readings. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, sir.
All right. Well, let's do it. Motion from Council-
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Miranda. Let's do a roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number 89. This is the tentative 2021-2022 calendar. This is for January 14th until April 30th of this, I'm sorry, of 2022. Can we get a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Great.
Chair, excuse me, Chair. We need a motion to approve that calendar.
Can we get a motion to approve the calendar, Councilmember Miranda?
So moved.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, the calendar is approved. We have a couple of items. The administrative update, it came on in the addendum. Anything, Mr. Shelby?
I believe the Chief of Staff, I don't know if he's available at this time, but wanted to perhaps update council.
The Chief of Staff, if he's not on the line, I know he had another meeting at 3:00 something that he had to get to. So if the Chief of Staff is not on the line, we can postpone this until our next regular meeting. I don't think he was. I did get a message that he had an annual meeting or that he wasn't able to.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a memorandum from Susan Johnson Velez, Senior Assistant Attorney, regarding that council scheduled public hearings on February 18th for notices of intent to suspend the sale of alcoholic beverages.
So move, Chairman. Second.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, if I could just address very quickly, I don't know if Ms. Johnson Velez is on the line as she signed in, but council, as you know, these are similar to something that council heard recently, and you may have read an article in a newspaper about it and seen the press release from the mayor. I just want to bring to council's attention, these are three hearings to be set the same day, three different locations on an issue of compliance with the city code. I just want to bring it to your attention that when you set this, the request is to set it for 1:30 in the afternoon. And just a reminder and a recommendation for council, if you could, if at all possible, on the 18th of February, please do not set staff reports for that date to load up the afternoon with staff reports, which are now scheduled to take place at 1:30. Right now, it's pretty open, and I would just ask you to consider only setting those items for staff reports on the 18th that are urgent and time-sensitive, that must be heard that day, so that you would be able to get to those hearings and get out of here at a reasonable time, because they may be, they may be short, they may be lengthy, but they would certainly, the way they're structured now, conflict with staff reports.
I mean, there are three of them, Chris, Mr. Shelby?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that could be long, so shouldn't that be set on a separate date? I mean, I mean, this is getting away from city business.
Excuse me, this is Susan Johnson Velez with the Legal Department. I know we had one of these hearings back in December, and it did take quite a long time, but I do not anticipate that these will take nearly as long, maybe about 30 minutes apiece is what I'm anticipating for each hearing. And we're just trying to get them scheduled as quickly as possible. We sent the notices out on January 13th. on, um, January 13th, I'm sorry, on, um, last week. And under the code, we can set them no less than 30 days from the date of the notice. And that's why we're seeking, um, the February 18th date, because we'd like to get them heard as quickly as possible, if that.
And I think, council, one way to address the time that these may take is to just be sensitive to the fact of adding staff reports to that particular date would just add to your day. So if there's any way you can avoid that, unless it's very sensitive, urgent, time-sensitive, um, just, I'll try to remind council, but if you could keep that in mind, that would be great.
All right. Who made the motion? Councilman Miranda with the second, Councilman Citro, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next up, we have a memo from our Chief Financial Officer, Dennis Rehero, a resolution for $11,900,000 within the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Grant Fund to assist the City of Tampa residents affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, do I have a motion if there are no questions to move this resolution?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Wait, wait. Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. Is any, um, is anybody on staff on, still on board, uh, in regard to this item?
Hi, good afternoon, council. This is Dennis Rehero.
Hey, Dennis.
Hello, sir.
John Dingfelder here. So tell me about the, the, the source of these funds and, uh, do we expect to spend them the way that we've been, that we've been? Is, is this futuristic or is this reimbursement? And if it's futuristic, are we going to spend them the same, the same way we've been spending them with people submitting applications and, and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir. It, it is futuristic. This was, uh, the result of legislation signed late last month, um, uh, by the White House, and it's about $12 million for rental housing, as you see, uh, rental assistance and housing-related expenses. Uh, the reason we've walked this on, things are moving fast. Uh, the Treasury Department was given 30 days to get $25 billion out the door. They just got their portal up last week. Uh, just two days ago, the city had to affirm that we intended to receive the money.
That's correct.
And we'll probably get the funding within the next two weeks. So, uh, as you know, we can't spend it if we don't appropriate it. So we've asked for a walk-on to, to get this funding appropriated as fast as we can so we can get out, uh, the money out the door as fast as we can. This is, uh, tailored to rental and housing assistance, especially those who are having troubles right now, who may be in arrears, uh, under threat of eviction, for instance, or in discussion with the Treasury Department, even perhaps those that are in good shape housing-wise, but they're, uh, they're impacting their health and medical bills in order to stay housed. So approval of this resolution will recognize the fund so we can move forward. But it is prospective, not retrospective.
And this is just rental? It's not foreclosure, prevention, or anything like that?
It may be. I don't know if it expands to that. If someone's on the line, uh, from, uh, from planning or housing and community development, perhaps they can answer that. If not, we'll circle back with that answer.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad to move the resolution.
Mr. Herro, you may not be answering this. We're, we're getting these dollars, and little we're going to approve this, but my, my question is, do we have a better system in place now to get this money out? Or, or, or we're going to use some kind of outsourced, uh, facility to help get this money out? Because I know housing is, is, is jam-packed and full, and I hear all the time that we, we're sending money back. We're not being to get money out in time. So I'm just hoping that we've got a, a system in place for this money to make sure we get it out.
Yes, sir. This is Dennis again. If I'm not mistaken, we're going to use a combination of in-house and outsourcing. I'll confirm that for you, though, again, in order to expedite the money getting out the door.
Thank you, sir. I, I want it expedited. If we're going to get it, we get to get it to the people and not be having so many, I want to say roadblocks on our end or there, but making sure we get it out to the people who need it. So thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have a, uh, motion to move this resolution?
I moved it earlier.
Yes. Councilman Miranda with the second, Councilman Citro, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Shelby, I believe that concludes our agenda. Before we go to new business, I just wanted to say thanks to Danielle as a clerk today for running this meeting, and I apologize that it went so long, but thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate you. All right. Councilman Miranda, any new business, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro, do you have anything, sir?
Nothing today, Mr. Chair.
Great. Councilman Carlson? Nope. Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Gould?
Yes, sir. As you know, the annual Toba Breakfast is upcoming Monday to celebrate our, uh, great leader, uh, Dr. Martin King Jr. Like to make a motion to give Toba, Tampa Organization of Black Affairs, accommodation for the 41st Annual Dr. Martin King Jr. Leadership Breakfast. The theme of this year, reawakening his dream. We honor the legacy of Dr. King and his efforts to promote unity, equality, and justice for all. The conversation will be presented at the breakfast on the morning of January 18th, 2021, sir.
Thank you very much.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Gould, second from Councilman Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is one of my, that's probably my favorite breakfast event of the year, and this is the first time that I won't be there physically, I think, in 11 years, maybe? 10 years? It's always a great event. Thank you very much.
Got one more for you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like the mobility department to look at the honorary sign for, uh, Bishop Williams and Reverend Reed, uh, and also, uh, look at coming up with some type of criteria ordinance for the future. Uh, if we're, we're looking at honoring people for, uh, to put signs on streets or on avenues or wherever you, uh, if you can do that. So, again, a motion for Dr., uh, Bishop Williams, Dr. Reed honorary signage, and also they can come back with also a criteria for future.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Gould, second from Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
No, they can bring that back to us within, I would say, at least 30 days. I don't think that should take that long.
We have February 18th.
That'll be fine, sir.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Viera?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, just a couple of quick ones. I motion to have city staff, um, trim, do a report on trimming of the trees around Station 13, uh, so that the bucket truck can pass. Um, the issue is worse, it appears, around the Sulfur Springs area, but all around, uh, Station 13. And I request that a report be returned to us and the status of this in, um, 60 days.
60 days would put us at, March 18th is our, a regular meeting. Would that work, sir?
Yes, sir. Sounds good to me.
You got it.
Um, I, I also want to, too, um, do pursuant to what I talked with, uh, Chief Trip about, um, in the first week of April 2021, um, talk about, or have a report on the changes that are happening right here, right now, uh, for, uh, Fire Station 13, and just see the, um, get a report on the, um, statistics and any statistical change.
Uh, you, you made a previous motion. We didn't vote on it?
Uh, no, sir. I, I, I had just told Chief Trip that I was going to be making that motion, which I make right now.
Okay, so is this all, all one motion or are these two separate items? We didn't vote on the first?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm out of it today, guys.
The first motion was for March 18th, uh, made by Councilmember Viera. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Gould. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the second motion, also by Councilmember Viera. What was the date for that, sir?
Um, the first week in April, if I may.
The first week in April will be April 1st.
There you go.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Viera. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Uh, yes, just really quickly. I, I made a motion before on the apprenticeship ordinance coming back to us on February 18th. I wanted to stress, I don't, again, I, I'm, I don't know why today. I'm a little, I don't want to say under the weather, but just slower than the average bear today. Um, that, that included not only the retainer issue, but also city staff and legal working with, um, stakeholders for, uh, continued improvements in ordinance. I believe I made that, but just to make it abundantly clear on the record. Um, next, I motion, if I may, that on March 18th, uh, last year, we had done a commendation, uh, just before COVID, to have our friends with the Jewish war veterans, uh, of America come in for the 125th anniversary, and we just never got to it because of COVID. So I would request that these great men and women come here on March 18th to receive their commendation.
Absolutely. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Anything else, sir?
And then lastly, June 9th of 2021 is going to be the 100th, um, anniversary of the birth of Robert Saunders, who's really one of the greatest, uh, folks here in the City of Tampa. He was, he took over the NAACP after the murder of Harry T. and Harriet Moore on Christmas night, 1951. He was a World War II veteran. Uh, he grew up in Carter City, um, here in the City of Tampa. He was just one of the greatest people that lived. He died, uh, tragically in a, um, automobile accident next to the, um, uh, gosh, what was that, that restaurant over on, uh, Dale Mabry with the cow? What was that called? The?
With the what?
The cow. The big cow. What?
Sam Seltzer's.
That was it. Uh, yep. He, as I recall, he died some years ago from that. But, um, June 9th, 19, or 2021 is going to be the 100th year of his birthday. And I would like the City of Tampa, um, just for us to do a request for the administration to do some sort of an event, some sort of a commemoration for the 100th anniversary of the birth of this great, uh, Tampiano, Tampanian, who is just such, such a great man, such a great man.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
I am finished.
Thank you very much. Uh, nothing from me except thanks to the Tampa Convention Center and our TNI staff. I see Eric and company and the great, the great, great Brian Sullivan. We appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right. Can I get a motion to receive and file?
Move, receive and file.
Motion to receive and file from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Gould. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.